I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene back to the public session. Will the city attorney please give us reportable actions taken in closed session?
Yes, the city council considered the matters listed on the closed session agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, John. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Robyn Grunmeyer and the invocation by Pastor Spencer Parrish.
I mean a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to you this evening as we come as a city. And, Lord, we just pray this day that you would guide this city, guide us, Lord. And, Lord, we just pray for the peace and prosperity of the city of Norco. That, God, that you would just begin to bless this city, bless us, Lord Jesus. And we pray right now on this day that you would guide us into that place, Lord, of peace and prosperity for our city, our state, and for our nation. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call upon an introduction for Chief Jeff Bike.
Good evening, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council staff and all the great citizens and residents of Norco. So, big, big agenda tonight. I'll keep it very brief, but really important. As you all know, last October, I promoted to deputy chief, but retained my duties here as the division chief in here in Norco, which has truly been one of the highlights of best four years of my career. And before I introduce Chief Otterman, I'm not going anywhere. I got a few years to go till I retire. I'm just moving up one rank in the chain of command, so I will still work with Bill on a day-to-day basis. So, please don't think I'm running away. Norco's a great place to work, and I assure you, after I introduce the chief here, you'll be in good hands. And he's got my cell phone number. So, without any further delay, I would like to introduce Division Chief Bill Otterman. William Otterman goes by Bill. Bill's a great guy. I've known him a good chunk of my career, 30 years in the fire service. I'll let Bill, you know, speak best to his background, but multi-agency experience, working in different counties. So, will fit right in here in the Northwest Division, specifically the city of Norco. He's already got a good taste of having a talking to by the mayor before the meeting starts, having a talking to from Ted in some good ways. But that's just the beauty of this city, how we communicate, how we work together, and we keep problems small. So, Bill?
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. It's great to meet all of you, and I look forward to working with the council and new mayor and working with the city manager. It's just an honor to be here, and I'm honored to serve the city of Norco. So, with that, I've been in the fire service for 28 years now. So, I've worked my way up from firefighter all the way to the position I'm in now. So, with that, yeah, that's it. So, I'm glad to be here. And I'll be relying on Chief Bike to help me out through that transition period. So, yep, thank you guys.
Well, I have a question for you. So, with your promotion and all that, do you still have to work with Scott Lane?
Oh, yes. Yep. Actually, I still gotta work.
Condolences. Okay.
Actually, I just played golf with him on Monday, so, yeah.
Any comments, Robin?
I just wanted to tell Chief Bike there's no need to be nervous. As long as you come back once in a while, the fate that met Chief Lane will not happen to you. So, there's no need to say, "I'm gonna be around." Just make sure you're around.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, I have a presentation. This is a donation for the retired flag boxes. Daniel Abram Bula? I got it. Okay. And if the rest of the council would like to join me down, please?
I, as well as members of my troop, friends, and family, constructed four retirement boxes for the city of Norco. These boxes are made out of wood and varnished with a clear finish. There is a locking mechanism on these boxes that will keep the flags secure and safe, along with a plaque commemorating my work. The boxes will be located at City Hall, the Veterans Memorial, and the Senior Center, and one extra box for a replacement if needed. The retired flag boxes are a safe place for residents or visitors of the city to retire their flags. The flags will be delivered to the Norco's Veterans Memorial and will be officially and honorably retired during one of our events at the memorial. I also presented my flag boxes to the Veterans Committee on June 6, 2022. Thank you.
So, we're just want everybody, when they get a chance, to take a look at the boxes Daniel built. And we're gonna go ahead and do a photo op over there for you. Okay, so next, excuse me. Okay, next is the LifeStream Blood Bank with Michael McDaniel, donor recruitment.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, guests, and citizens. I'm Michael McDaniel. I'm the director of donor recruitment for LifeStream Blood Bank. We are the nonprofit blood bank for this area. There we go. We've been serving the inland empire for over 70 years. We have a very simple mission. It's to help save lives by connecting donors and patients through the gift of blood. We do this by serving more than 80 hospitals in six counties, which totals to over 7 million residents that are under our service. We need 500 donations a day just to meet the hospital demand in the area. And we do that through our fixed site centers, and you'll see a map of that briefly, as well as 1,600 mobile blood drives that we conduct annually. Here's a map of our fixed site centers. All of the red pins are centers that we've opened. I'm proud to announce that we just opened Hemet one month ago, so that is turning red. And we will be opening Beaumont before the end of the year. We are in an ongoing critical blood shortage, and this is such a well-attended meeting. I'd like to see a show of hands. Who remembers when the American Red Cross declared the national blood emergency in January? Anybody?
Yep.
First time in their history, that press helped every blood bank around the nation. Our donations went up. Unfortunately, we're back down to that level. We have 1.7 days of blood on hand as of this morning. And two types, if you're familiar with blood donation, that are most needed are O positive and O negative. We have less than 40 units on our shelf for each type. That equates to .3 days of supply for those. The reason those are important, for those of you that may not know, O positive is used in trauma because we don't have time to determine your blood type. And O negative is used on infants like Paisley and birthing mothers. Paisley was saved by 41 pints of LifeStream blood donations, and she survived open-heart transplant at LLU. We have a new, unfortunately, baby that has come under our need as of yesterday. Her name is Jessica. If you follow us on social, you will see her picture today. She is a one-pound, six-ounce premature baby that was born. She is at LLU. She is doing better. She's had eight blood transfusions so far, and she is in need of more. Her grandmother is throwing a special drive at Huntington Beach on Saturday, this Saturday, the 9th, and we are trying to get some other drives on the calendar to benefit her. But she's gonna require a lot more blood transfusions over the next coming months as she pulls through such a miraculous birth. So, those are the patients that you're saving. If you donate blood, you're saving children like her. And one pint can save three adults, it saves eight babies. So, how much blood is needed? Why are we in this situation? Well, the population of this area, as the city council well knows, continues to grow. We're projected to grow at greater than 5% at least until the end of 2027, according to the latest census data. And that means every two seconds, someone in the United States needs blood. One in seven people walking into our hospitals are going to need it. And this is the scary one. One in two women and one in three men in the United States will develop cancer in their lifetime. If you're gonna fight cancer with chemo and radiation, you're gonna have to have those platelets and red blood cells replaced. That takes about eight units a week for that treatment. For a mass trauma incident, which unfortunately we have seen way too much of lately, those are typically 50-pint events per person. So, something like you saw in Chicago recently, or just north of Chicago in Highland, can easily be a 1,000-pint event. What does that mean for us in cities like Norco? It means that our current supply, we're not ready for something like that. That blood needs to be on the shelf before something like that happens, and I pray that it doesn't. But it is my job to make you aware, as protectors of this city, what it takes to be ready for those things. Organ transplants, especially livers, livers are about 100 units. We average almost one a day in Southern California. We send over 30,000 units a year just for liver transplants. So, here's some common myths. It's not all doom and gloom. Can you donate if you've had a tattoo? You absolutely can. I get that asked most often. If you did it, if you had a tattoo by a licensed parlor in the state of California and it's healed, please donate. If you received that tattoo, it may be an unlicensed place that might have had bars on the window. We ask that you wait three months, and then please donate blood. We still would like to receive your blood. Another one is that blood makes you gain weight. It's actually the opposite. It helps you lose about a pound for every donation. You can check other frequent myths on our website and get answers to those questions. Here's the last three years of collections, and I only put up this very boring chart to make one point. Hospital usage continues to outpace collections for all of Southern California. And what that means is that Southern California is a net importer of blood. We have been since 2019. It means that we don't collect enough blood to support our citizens, so we have to fly that blood in. Right now, it's the state of Hawaii. We're flying about 400 units in a week from that state. And they collect a lot better than us because frankly, they took COVID precautions that locked the state down. They have a very healthy population, and they have state-sponsored blood collection, which is the only state in our nation to do it. So, what has Norco done? Norco is a fantastic city. Since 2008, we've had blood drives here. Last year, 463 pints. I'm challenging Norco this year for 700 pints. And this is a little personal for me because I grew up in a small town in Oklahoma on a horse-and-cattle ranch, and I know what it means to be from a small community and that community spirit. And it's something that we see in cities like Norco that we don't see in, say, a city like San Bernardino or Riverside. And I've addressed those cities, and typically, the mayor or the city council will shake my hand and give a nice big smile, and that's about the end of it. I would like to leave here today with at least one blood drive. That's my goal. We are not fully booked for July. We are worse for August. Our collections are on pace to be 1,500 pints short for both of those months. I think Norco can definitely hit those 700 pints. I think that we could be a part of the Labor Day celebrations here, which would be big for us. We've never been a part of that. So, if the city can host a special drive, or anybody else in the audience wants to host a blood drive, visit Lstream.org. It's that easy. We have a dedicated regional account manager for this area. Her name is Sandy Hale. She's been here for years and years. There's her contact information on the screen. I think that Norco can really be a big help, and I am so thankful that you invited me to speak here this evening and let us get our message out for patients like Paisley and now baby Jessica. Thank you so much. Are there any questions I can answer?
Does council have any questions?
I do have a couple, because I am slightly competitive. So, like, if somebody goes to your donation center in Riverside or Lions Club or Norco High School or wherever, all of those count towards our Norco donation totals. Is that correct?
And the high school and all of its blood drives last year did about 300 units.
Yeah, the high school does a really good job of coordinating and bringing in folks for the blood drive. So, my second question would be, how long between donations for people?
That's a great question. 56 days, so my simple rule of thumb is two months.
Okay. Thank you.
Platelets, you can donate every other week. Plasma, you can donate every four weeks.
Andy, I have a question. On our communications platforms, are we... Can we do something, help this out a little bit? Okay. All right.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go ahead, and we'll move now into city council reports on regional boards. Call on Mayor Pro Tem Grunmeyer to start.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both of my meetings were with Mrs. Roper in between our last two meetings. One was with the District Two Homeless Solutions Meeting, getting updates on what all of the communities in District Two are doing to work through solutions for homelessness. And just in a general comment, I'd like to say this committee, I remember going to my first meeting, was a small little table upstairs in Corona City Hall, and it has grown to such an effective and impactful group. And I'm just so excited to see the growth and progress in that work, and I'm thankful for it, and mountains are being moved, and more will be moved. And then Karen invited me to a homeless roundtable that she hosted with Lake Elsinore Unified School District. Through our partnerships, Mrs. Roper was able to speak to the Corona Norco Unified School District Administrative Team. And these meetings are about making connections to services. So many times, if you're a teacher at a school and you have a student that is homeless, you're not sure where to go. Who do I get for help? Those types of things. And so, making these connections with the school district, the city, our neighboring cities, the continuum of care with Mrs. Roper, all of those networks and connections are helping to get people that need the services, those services in a more timely and effective manner. So, I'm just really thankful for the collaboration and the opportunity to attend these meetings and obviously for the work that all the members of the groups are doing.
Thank you, Robin.
On July 16th, I attended the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees meeting, where we finalized our budget for the upcoming year, looked at priorities. Just wanna remind everyone that, you know, part of your property tax funds the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control. So, if you have issues with mosquitoes, with bees, with anything that carries disease, that you can call them. They'll come out. They'll take care of it. You can get free mosquito fish to put in your horse trough, depending on what's going on at your house. So, we have, it's a great little organization. They do a lot of work all around to really, you know, keep our communities safe and healthy.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin? Speak up a little.
Oh, great. I'm so sorry, everybody, for this. I got the COVID, so I apologize. I think the highlight was I had a great time at the WRCOG General Conference, which is probably where I got COVID. I think the highlight was I had a great time at the WRCOG General Conference, which is probably where I got COVID. And, but I had a lot of fun that night. I got to be one of the emcees. And I, actually, my favorite part was, our guest of honor was one of the founders of Apple, and I was able to introduce him to Matt, our IT person. And that was actually the most fun that I had because it was actually a lot of work. Just the look on his face when he got to take a picture with him, that for me made the entire evening. Other than that, I really have nothing to share. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I've just been busy. Basically, one of the things that this just came out in the Laugh, the Laugh co-meeting, was that they are really looking at the county pocket areas around each of the cities and to determine the sphere of influence. And I'll bring that back later to look at that. It was so, caught so much interest by other communities in the city that they had to extend the meeting date. They actually increased it from the June. It was supposed to be the day it was all worked on. They've extended it till July. That's how much input came in there. So we'll see a lot of that information hopefully being disseminated by the Laughco Board. One of the things also, and I want to thank the RCTC, the Ad hoc Committee, working on it, for mostly the drive of 15, and see the lanes, and all of a sudden, it stops at Riverside and San Bernardino County. And, you know, the toll road is not there anymore. We just finished out that agreement with them, and that'll be approved by the County Transportation Commission, to let San Bernardino have part of that, so they can, they'll start their project soon. Hopefully, by 2024, they'll be beginning their project, their construction, and putting their lanes all up in the San Bernardino County area. Today, I had Riverside Transit Agency meeting. A lot of good things coming out there. New buses coming online. They're slowly trying to get out of COVID and get the ridership back up. You're going to look at, as we go through, and the school year starts, I know here it starts in August, and then in September, they're gearing up for the bus ridership to increase. We'll see. Community college numbers are down, but we'll see if it increases in the bus transit areas. Then finally, my favorite, the Day of the Cowboy, please. July 23rd, just when Berwyn is here. You've got to have July. Day of the Cowboy, all the preferred seating has been sold. So there's general seating left, and you've got to get your tickets early because if not, you're going to pay a full price, and you're going to pay 10 bucks more a seat if you do, because if you waited. So please, come out. This is going to be fun. It's going to be a rodeo. We're going to have everything in there. Starts at 4:00 in the afternoon. Grunmeyer, Robyn's going to defend her title for the cow chip throwing contest, so we'll see what happens. Justin, you're going to be back there throwing? All right, tell them to get ready. Bill, you're on now. You've got a challenge. You're going to be throwing cow chips, okay? That's how we do it out here in Norco. So anyway, please, it's going to be a lot of fun, a lot of events coming up. But that's, we've done the Day of the Cowboy for almost 20 years, and it's a lot of fun, so please come on out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. And I have nothing to report at this time. So let's move into the consent calendar, and I'll call upon the city clerk.
Yeah, before you do, one item needs, I don't know what the final agenda looked like, but what was on the original agenda, item 2H pertaining to Frontier, cannot be considered on the consent calendar by statute, and so you need to move it to 5E.
And we're moving it to 5E?
Ready? All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion prior to the motion to consider any action by the presiding governmental body. Any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the governmental body or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item three of the agenda.
Thank you, Dana. Outside of 2H, are there any items that need to be polled?
Mr. Mayor, J is in John, and K is in King.
Any others? Do we have any public comments?
We do for item 2K, and we'll take comment when, since those have been polled.
Okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the remaining?
Motion to approve the rest.
Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Grunmeyer. Councilmember Grunmeyer, your vote?
Okay.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, Dana. Ted, item 2J?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and this, Chad, I just have a question on this. And this goes back to, we're approving additional funds of $30,000 for the Dale's Drive in Park Ridge, correct?
Correct.
I guess I have a, we have an engineer that went and looked at that initially for the project, and they didn't know that that was in a floodplain and that it's going to never compact. I mean...
Traditionally, we don't do geotechnical, take borings for planned street projects. So we did not have any thought process or expectation that there would be an issue with water at such a low level or saturation. It wasn't even like it was water, as far as water tables, it's just saturation. And so it was just unexpected because if we did that on every project, it would definitely get a lot more expensive. We do normally pothole for all the utilities to verify locations, but we rarely ever take geotechnical on a traditional repave project.
And the reason being, because that's $30,000 more. And traditionally, that area, or Park Ridge and Dales, has been a floodplain. I mean, that's, the water's gone through Kip Corners. That's where it goes. I'm just, I guess I have an issue when we have an engineer look at that and decide to go in there and didn't see that. I mean, I know they, we don't pothole, but you would have looked at that area and say, hey, why is it doing? I mean, we've done flood projects in there because of that area, and yet, they missed it. I'm just, I'm baffled by the lack, the engineer work that was done before that.
I don't want to second-guess the work. I mean, it is, regardless of the storm drain system that's there, it wouldn't give you an impression that somehow you would anticipate or expect to have that kind of condition. I mean, we've done many projects where there is similar flood channel or projects, infrastructure in that area. We've never had that problem. Only thing I can say is if we had known about it, the likely solution would have been the same. That doesn't excuse anything, but it just is a reality that we would have ultimately had to mitigate that, and we would have known about it upfront, but just the candidates who traditionally don't do geotechnical on street projects. It's just not a common practice for us.
Okay. You understand the frustration because we have projects that keep going. And then I look at happen on Center, where whoops, we find pipes that aren't put at the right level. We run the situations in there, and then there's a, I think the one on Hillside is taking forever. So you just, are we doing our due diligence with these engineers, or are they doing their due diligence? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very confident they're doing the property diligence. I mean, we can take a gazillion potholes, and it just drives up the price, but we commonly will take several potholes of all utilities. But, you know, in the example of Center, we just didn't pothole in the particular areas where unfortunately, the gas company made it, you know, less than 12 inches, which is unheard of for an infrastructure like that. And was not expected. So when we potholed it, we found it deeper, but when it came on a rise, it was a lot shallower. So we do make some assumptions that, at certain points, that we, from point to point, we assume it's along that grade, and it should be a reasonable assumption that we have coverage. But unfortunately, sometimes we get bit. We can add a lot more to that, you know, and, but it's just been common practice to try to mitigate the costs. We absolutely pothole utilities, so we do have that. But in Center's case, which is the extreme, we hit something that we just never contemplated would be there like that. I mean, we even had one of our own water lines that was a foot underground. It just boggles my mind of my predecessors in way back when of why would they put a water main that shallow on a street? But it was there. We didn't know about it, unfortunately, you know. And where other parts of the street was plenty deep, it just got real shallow in one specific area, and they found it when they went through with the grinder. So sometimes it happened, and they happen in bunches, but, you know, I apologize for it. But it's, again, practice-wise, what we tried to do there, I think we did what reasonable expectations were, and just unfortunately, it bit us in that scenario on Center Street, but...
All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve?
Please vote. Councilmember Alman?
Yes.
And Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, Dana. Item 2K, we'll do the public comments first.
First person to speak is Matt Jefferson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It's my honor to be here. Thank you, city staff and general public. My name is Matt Jefferson, and I live in LMD number five for the last 18 years. I'm speaking today on maintenance district issues because I received a letter on May 19th of 2022 announcing a price increase over 7% for the CPI. I also received a map, which on the back of this letter has a map dated July 18th, 2018. It's a four-year-old map that states that there is benefit for the specifics, homeowner's lot, five of the 50 that have slope maintenance. When I went to the meeting on June 16th, it stated that this was an error and that there was no intent to have this released to the public. I've never had maintenance on this slope area, nor have the other four homeowners had maintenance on the slope areas. Some of them are inaccessible due to slope height and angle. But I just want to say that we have not been receiving any benefit in the LMD for this slope maintenance. It inspired me to learn more about the LMD. Code Division, Street Highway Code Division 15 Part II is known as the Landscape Lighting Act of 1972. For anyone who's not read it, Chapter Two are definitions. In Section 22525, it defines improvements. Nowhere does it define fencing as an improvement or as part of an LMD. It does say walls, curbs, sidewalks, gutters, sidewalks, and typical things that are like parks and recreation items that every city would have, but Norco's unique, and it requires fencing. I mention this because in the 2022-23 proposed budget, but not in our letter of May 19th, it had a $35,000 mountain for fencing, yet it's only 30% of our neighborhood. Because our neighborhood is unique, and it's a more recent neighborhood, it has trails on both sides. So it would cost double to do the fencing and complete it in total for our 50-unit community. We can't tell what sections or when all the community would be done. Neither was that communicated in the meeting or in the letter. Also, the city representatives say LMDs cannot have Measure R funds, but I cannot find the specific part of the law that states this in the 1972 Landscape Lighting Act. In fact, Measure R has been very successful. Not the $9 million that you expected to raise, but it's generated over 12.55 million. It has a balance of 9.9 million last year in June. We're doing great things with this money, and it's been very, very helpful for the entire city. It's benefiting all of Norco, but there are 975 homes in LMDs, which represents almost 13% of the 7,400 homes in Norco. It means that I can find no part of the 1972 law that says that it excludes homeowners, especially when fencing is required to maintain a city look and feel and safety for horses, pedestrians, and cars. Finally, I'd like to explain my last concern is that there is an observer position. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tricia Jefferson.
Just probably should make a comment that, well, appreciate his comments, that this is setting the public hearing, so you're going to have an opportunity once again to repeat yourself.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. I'm Tricia Jefferson. I'm with him. I live at Pompano Place for 18 years. If you haven't been on my street, it is actually one of the most beautiful streets in Norco. We have beautiful trees. And in this new land maintenance district plan, we've been told that those trees won't be cut for five years, only up to 15 feet. This is going to be a real issue for our street because they are beautiful, and I love them. But if they don't get trimmed for five years, it's going to be a problem for us on our street because the trees are going to continue to grow bigger, the roots are growing, and they're going to destroy the street, the pavement on the street. My concerns also are that there is $30,000 roughly being allotted for playground, the playground in our community park for the rubberized flooring. And I understand that it has some holes in it from neighbors that go down there. But my concern is, you know, that if we are the ones paying for it, I would like our community to have input on how the money is being spent. And maybe there's the option to repair versus spend $30,000. We have had a porta potty at that park for 18 years. And I, in speaking with community members in my, in my streets, that maybe our community would vote to have a porta pot, or the porta potty removed in a permanent bathroom. I don't know anything about what it costs. I have no idea. But I would like our community to have the chance to discuss that. And our community may decide, we do have a surplus of $175,000 that the city's budget is looking at depleting, which concerns me. We are one of two solvent LMDs. I want to see us remain solvent, especially with the economy. But I actually don't know that our community members would choose to put in the fencing. I've often wondered, when is the fencing going to happen? I didn't know it was up to us. I didn't know that currently, as it stands, that Measure R money can't pay for our community. I feel like I'm being excluded from the Measure R money. I voted for Measure R. I was never told that if I lived in an LMD, that money wouldn't apply to me. So that's bothering me because I vote, I did vote for it. But I'm just, for me personally, I would like to see the opportunity to get into this meeting July 20th and reevaluate the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further comments, Mayor.
John, you'll be prepared on July 20th to address the fencing issue and LMDs?
Yeah, I mean, I can...
Yeah, I mean, I can address it right now. I mean, there's, there's seven.
No, let's, we'll, we'll wait. I just want to make sure that that will be addressed in the pub, public hearing. Okay. Ted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the reason I pulled it was so to give some residents an opportunity. I attended the LMD meetings for the five LMDs. And unfortunately, not all the LMDs had very many representatives or residents show up. Um, uh, LMD four had a good response. Uh, LMD five, Matt showed up. Uh, LMD three, there was a couple of residents. LMD one and two had nobody. So, and, and that's one of the reasons I pulled it so that anybody that was here, they had the opportunity to voice their opinion. Yes, there's going to be a, a public hearing, but in the past, it seems that when we have the public hearing, it gets you shoved off. And because we're so fast to get it done, so we can have it done by August 10th, that it doesn't happen. That's why I pulled it to give as many people the opportunity to voice their opinion on this. Uh, the LMDs, uh, I live in one, so I understand them. And Matt's right, there's, uh, there's, are nearly a thousand homes in our community that have to do with the Landscape and Lighting Act rules. Uh, a lot of stuff is done by RKA, the engineering firm, that that's along with, uh, now Ms. Hamilton and her crew have inherited that. It's a mess. The LMDs are a mess, I'll be honest with you. Um, unless they're done properly, when they're started out, they're, they're, they're never going to make all the assessments. So again, my whole purpose of pulling it was so that people get a chance and I hope somebody else that lives in the LMDs have that opportunity. And when it comes back in July, and we give the residents that opportunity to make their speech. Cause this is it. They got a letter, which I appreciate, man, it was the first time that the letters went out that actually showed, we actually had, there'd be increases in the assessment. We never got that before. So, but make sure that there's plenty of maps so the residents understand what they're going to pay for as they go through. Uh, they are a bone of contention and especially if you live there. Uh, the, uh, the fencing, the trail fencing, the, the residents up in LMD four paid for that trail fencing in their area. Uh, yes, Measure R money and general fund money was used and, uh, on, uh, LMD two to pay for the fences and LMD three to pay for the fences that border the, uh, public access in, into the city. So that's why those were done, not in the core of it. But, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And with that, unless, uh, you have anything, I'd just move to approve so we can hold the public hearing.
Catherine, any comments?
Second.
Please vote. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Move into public comments. Call upon the city clerk.
This is a time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please submit a speaker card to the meeting clerk. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the governmental body's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The governmental body shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. The first speaker card is Sigrid Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am here this evening to let you know that Norco College has scheduled two CERT programs. Um, uh, one in September, which will be occurring four days over two-week period of time. The second one will be scheduled or is scheduled in October, which will be basically a boot camp. We are doing four days in one week. We are looking at getting 60 members from the community, from Norco and the surrounding areas to participate in this. All ancillaries and the cost of the program is free to anyone. So you have the information in front of you. I've left several of those forms and flyers at the front desk and there's some in the back. So we'd like to get the word out that we are offering that Community Emergency Response Team program for anyone that's interested. Thank you.
Sigrid, just want to let you know, appreciate all your work and all your efforts in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brandon Lane.
Good evening, Brandon.
Good evening.
Haven't seen you in years.
I have not been, I have not been around in many years. I, uh, for those of you who do not know me, my name is Brandon Lane and, uh, uh, I saw Mr. Harper this evening. My first appointment in the city of Murrieta was a planning commissioner and Mr. Harper was our attorney, uh, way back when. I served as an elected official uh, in the city of Murrieta for almost 12 years. I stepped down in 2019 to go work for the president and was in DC for a few years. Um, I'm back in California. I actually didn't, my family didn't move. We commuted back and forth, uh, from, uh, I, I commuted back and forth from Murrieta to DC. Um, I had, as an elected official in Murrieta, I represented our city to regional bodies, the WR COG, SCAG. Uh, I was chairman of the board for Riverside Transit Agency. And I say all of that uh, because I have no agenda here this evening, except for, uh, coming to your fine community to see, to say thank you for your service. As someone who has served in your shoes for many years, uh, it is interesting that most of the time that people show up at this podium is when they are affected in a negative way, uh, and they want the city council to hear about it. And one of the things that I thought was very important when I came back is to take the time to come and just say thank you for your service. People sometimes don't truly understand the time away uh, from your family, the time that you sacrificed going to multiple meetings, uh, representing your community, uh, to regional bodies, uh, which has a great effect on this region. And so this evening, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Uh, I greatly appreciate it because the decisions you make here in Norco have an effect on the citizens in Murrieta and this entire region. And so I just wanted to say thank you. Uh, and with that, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Langlis.
Good evening.
Lane. Um, I just came in to speak, uh, this evening to speak on, uh, the CFO. And I want to thank you for agendizing this item. Um, the CFO is designed to add, uh, economic relief to families. And the CFO already has limit.
Julie, let me interrupt you for a second.
She's not able to be here for the item later this evening, so I am allowing her to speak during this time.
I don't know how late you, sometimes you guys go so late.
Okay.
I went to go watch it on YouTube.
And I'll give you your time back.
Okay.
Restart the clock.
So, um, so I came in on the CFO. It is designed to add economic relief to families. A CFO already limits the amount of, um, income you can, the state sets a limit on it. So I think maybe one of our issues is coming more from the home-based business license. And so that's, um, one thing I continually hear about the home-based business is, um, the complaint of traffic. Traffic, um, I believe can be easily exaggerated. Um, also, I believe the ordinance says something about zero increase in traffic for a home-based business, if that's correct, um, which makes it very simple for the city to shut you down at any time. And, um, also the zero increase in traffic, I think maybe leads to neighbors telling on neighbors or the city policing Facebook. And I guess my biggest concern is when the city will put a corporation in a neighborhood which increases traffic, um, not good or bad. Um, CarMax in the neighborhood or the large industrial complex, I believe there's, it's in a neighborhood. So then when you see the city shut down a micro business in the name of traffic, I guess as a citizen, I come in and question that. Um, businesses are constantly changing. Uh, we've seen that with COVID. And, uh, Norco, I believe, is full of artisans, people who work with their hands. They're creative. Um, the entrepreneur spirit is here. And I think that it should be celebrated by our city and supported by our city. Um, I think a common goal you might see in small businesses, micro businesses, we're really talking about CFOs are, we want to start a small business. We want to, um, create supplemental income. At this time, it's very important for families to have that option to create a supplemental income to raise our families in Norco and sustain this lifestyle. And I guess lastly, you would find a common thread of most of us put our heart and soul into our small businesses or our micro businesses. So I thank you for looking at this, um, agenda item. And I'm not sure just how the home-based business license fits into the CFO and everything we're talking about at this time. So I thank you for your time. And, um, I thank you for your response and, um, yeah, I hope you consider those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker card is Bonnie Slager.
Hi, Bonnie.
Hi. Um, again, it's fair time, fair button time. I just happen to have a few fair buttons. They're only $20 apiece, so I hope you'll start getting your fair buttons. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Dana?
I have no further public comments, Mayor.
Uh, well, now moving to item five, discussion and action items. Once again, I'll call upon the city clerk.
For discussion items, the order of presentation is number one, staff report presentation. Number two, council questions of staff. Three, public comment. Four, council discussion and action.
Thank you. Item five A. Andy, are you going to start this one? Or Michelle?
I was going to take it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Before you tonight for consideration is the approval of the fiscal year 23 MOU between the city of Norco and the city of Corona for collaborative homeless programs and service for a total amount not to exceed $615,690 and to authorize the city manager or his, or his designate to approve non-substantive amendments within the approved program budget. The proposed MOU includes the continuation of the fiscal year 22 program to provide two city net part-time case managers supplying a total of 32 hours of weekly street outreach, engagement, and case management services, along with eight motel emergency shelter rooms per night. It also includes contract management from the city of Corona Homeless Solutions Manager, Karen Roper, who is here with us tonight to provide you and the public with a presentation on outcomes and progress during fiscal year 22 and answer any questions, uh, that council may have. If city council approves this recommendation, the fiscal year 23 MOU will be finalized and executed with the term beginning July, July 1, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. With that, I am honored to turn the presentation over to who I call the homeless guru, um, homeless services manager Karen Roper, who I appreciate, um, doing the heavy lifting for the city of Norco and supplying assistance to staff for this program.
Thank you, Michelle. Evening, Karen.
Good evening. May I trouble the clerk for the clicker? Oh, you have the clicker. Good evening, honorable mayor, uh, council members. Uh, for the record, my name is Karen Roper. I'm a proud 35-year, uh, city of Norco resident and also the homeless solutions manager for the city of Corona. And I was recently elected to be the chair of the Riverside County Continuum of Care. And I'll talk about a little, a little bit more as we get into the presentation. Wanted to take you and the public down, a walk down memory lane, uh, to talk about where we were uh, for the current fiscal, well, actually fiscal year 2022, uh, when we discussed, uh, your opportunity to have one of two options for funding fiscal year 2022. And based on the, the need of your residents, you did opt to go with option one, which was the $537,000 option. Um, that happened, so our city council basically approved waiting until you would act. And then, uh, we had briefings with you and then you acted on July the 7th. And then the, uh, the fiscal year 2022 MOU was approved. And you can see the total city net contract, the amount that it was for the 492 plus the, the city of Corona admin fee. Uh, let's go to where we are for this particular fiscal year. So we had the opportunity to have briefings with your council on both the 2nd and the 9th of June. And then our city council did approve renewal of the MOU. And here we are tonight, uh, to, for your consideration of renewal of the 23 MOU, as Michelle had indicated, and she already gave the amount. The one thing that I did want to state for your council and the public is that it is a little bit higher than it was last year and it's mostly motel costs. Uh, the costs of motels are a little bit more expensive. There is some uh, in terms of inflation and labor market challenges, but it's mostly motel costs. Let's talk about outcomes for the program. So let's talk about the, the motel program. Your motel, uh, program, it provides emergency shelter, case management, wraparound services. You had 19 clients that were served and I think it's important for uh, the members of the public to know that every single one of these clients that were served have documentable ties to the city of Norco. These are not transients coming from cities all over. These are your own residents. And we are very serious about documenting the ties to the city of Norco. We not only have city net, uh, evaluate through persons IDs or their car registration or their employment, but we also work with, uh, the Riverside Sheriff's set team, who also can run our clients to, to make sure that they have ties to the city. So it's, again, I want to emphasize, these are your own residents that are becoming homeless in your city that are being served. Let's take a look at the folks that were served in the motel program. You have nine folks that were struggling with substance abuse issues, 11 that had mental health issues. And those numbers don't add to 19 because a lot of times people have co-occurring diagnoses, right? So they might have substance use challenges as well as mental health issues. All extremely to no income. All extremely low to no income. Let's look at the demographic profile of your residents that were served in this program. You can see the age ranges are 30 through, we had some folks that were 70, 80, but mostly in the 40s and 50s. And in terms of the race, it's, uh, mostly folks that were, uh, white. And then also, also multiracial, you can see that, uh, there were eight females and 11 males. And it's, it's typical, what even what we're seeing in the city of Corona, that we have a tendency to see more homeless males than females. But this is, uh, some important things for you to know. Uh, in terms of the, the way that the economy is right now, you can measure what's going on in the economy by, by the number of first-time homeless. So people that have never been homeless before. So you had four folks that had never experienced homelessness that were falling onto hard times in the city. And then we had, uh, 15 folks that had long-term episodes of homelessness, otherwise known as chronic homelessness. One of the things that CityNet does is outreach and engagement and it starts with a contact. So it could be a referral where, uh, they might get a referral from the sheriff's department or it comes through city hall. They'll make a, uh, an initial contact. And then, um, they might try to engage somebody in the services. Uh, sometimes people say yes. Uh, sometimes people say no. They might not say yes the first time. And then an engagement is actually a, a positive interaction where they agree to enroll in case management and receive services from CityNet. Sometimes that means an immediate placement in the motel program. Sometimes it means case management on the streets because the motel program is full. Or maybe we're trying to get them referred to another program or service. Here's the really great thing that I think is very positive for the city of Norco. Of the 346 contacts, 321 said yes. They enrolled in case management, meaning that they said, I want help at some level. So that is a really good outcome. I wanted to give, uh, your council and members of the public a picture of some of the people that we have been serving through this program. We had an example of a single male who was living in his car for a year after his apartment caught fire. Senior female with broken family relationships, living in this city for five years in her car. A single female with mental illness and drug addiction, living in the riverbed for 10 years. A family of four, this was referred through the school district with two children. Their schools enrolled in middle and high school, became homeless due to financial challenges. Single female living in her car with a dog and trying to make a living at Amazon. Single male suffering from stage four liver failure, opioid addiction, living on the streets. And Corona Norco Unified School District teacher that was living in her car because she was part-time status and couldn't afford housing. And we actually have had some other, just as a matter of fact, today I want to give an example. We got a referral of somebody that has lived in this town. They went to, all through the whole school system, from elementary to high school, lived in this town, grew up with their family, then ended up in a house over on Pendley, renting the house. And the house was sold, which is because the market has been selling. And this gentleman had nowhere to go. He suffered from a stroke. He has physical disability and he was relegated to living in a motel, paying himself. But he, because he's disabled, his income is limited. And so he was referred to our program. So we, because of trying to verify ID, we coordinated with RSO set team and they found like the full detailed history of his ties to the city. So that's just an example of when your residents are falling on hard times, how they get referred to our program. He's going to be placed in the motel program. Let's look at permanent housing placements. You had five housing placements, so it's about 26%. And that's actually right about where Corona is pacing, we're like at 28%. So the cities are pacing and the programs are similar because you have the same operator, right? So you had one Norco shared housing opportunity. That means somebody that had a room for rent. They were willing to open up their home and rent that room to one of our clients. You had a senior who had actually, she's the senior that was living in her car for five years. She had been on the waiting list. And so what we were able to do was place her in the motel program, help her with some other life issues. And then she was able to get her apartment fully furnished in the Make It Cozy program. Also, our county helped with two rapid rehousing placements. And I want to acknowledge Tanya Torneo, the Deputy Director from the Riverside County Continuum of Care, who is here this evening. The county's been just a great partner working with the City of Norco and the City of Corona. You also had a senior who moved, he went from our motel program to the county's PRK Project Room Key motel program and then on to Corona at the River Run Senior Apartments. Let's take a look at the riverbed. Riverbed is always a challenge, but it's important, no matter how challenging it is, that we continue to be as vigilant as possible because it is extremely dangerous, high fire area. And that is why I was so thankful for Mayor Protam-Grenmeyer to talk about the Second District Collaborative because now we have all of the cities in the western region working together in unison to try to address the San Ana River because it has the largest concentration of homeless living in the San Ana Riverbed. So let's talk about what happened. We started outreach in collaboration with the county agencies and City Net in July of 2021. We were able to engage 12 riverbed clients. So 12 went into the motel program in Norco. Two were referred to County Project Room Key. Six were referred to Rapid Rehousing. All 11 for Section 8 applications. And then we do this thing called VI-SPADAT, that's Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. That's a big acronym for a national survey that Congress and HUD want agencies that serve the homeless to use to prioritize their vulnerability. So that those that have the higher scores go into the county's coordinated entry system and will be in the queue for housing, permanent supportive housing. So someone that might be living with mental illness, chronic health issues, drug addiction, physical disability. Can you see a theme, all of the, they score really high on VI-SPADAT. They are the ones that are typically in and out of jail, in and out of hospitals, in and out of mental health institutions. And so VI-SPADAT prioritizes based on the score in the system, if that makes sense. So we want to make sure we always get folks VI-SPADATED so that we can queue them up for programs and services that they would be eligible for. I'm proud to say that our two cities, both Corona and Norco, were the first to shelter all of the known encampment residents at that time. And kudos to Michelle, who worked hard with the Army Corps of Engineers to get approval for the cleanup because we know that we have protected wildlife and there are strict rules about nesting seasons and how you conduct cleanup. And then clean up the debris in a safe manner, meaning you have to hand carry it out and make sure that you're not disturbing the least bells virio protected little sparrow that is native to the San Ana River. And then we had positive press coverage, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. And then another thing that we did, and again, kudos to Tanya and her team. They applied for a regional grant for the San Ana Riverbed project. So Michelle and I and Alejandra got together and we worked on a million-dollar grant for Norco and for Corona. And even though we weren't successful because it was highly competitive across the state, I'm excited because of the collaboration that we had and the template that's been set for future grant opportunities. I do want to talk about the press that this effort that we received because it was an opportunity for the media, particularly the press enterprise, to see that this wasn't a city that was just kicking people out of the riverbed that had no place to go. There was a very coordinated, focused effort to focus on getting people connected to resources and also protecting wildlife habitat and also protecting residents and also restoring trails for equestrians. And so really a win-win-win. And it was really great to see the press enterprise highlight that. And that's, again, for the whole western region that we're working on this. This is a picture of the point-in-time count results. And you can see that for Norco, we had an increase of two. And I think that has a lot to do with what's happening in the economy. And you can even see Corona, we had an increase as well of one. But considering what's going on in the economy, that's really not, oops, too dramatic. Just a picture of what's going on overall with the count of the homeless. You can see that the total homeless population increased by 15% in Riverside County. I saw a spike of 83% in more families with children that were homeless. Veteran homelessness increased by 20%. Seniors 62-plus increased by 22%. And the sheltered population increased by 83%. That's actually a positive thing because that means more cities are stepping up to the plate to partner with nonprofits to get people off the streets and into shelter. If we want to look at how does our region compare to other counties, Tanya's group has a consultant by the name of Joe Colletti, Urban Initiatives. And they collaborate with all of the Southern California continuums. So he has data of how all of the other counties are performing. So we were able to get that from him so that you can see Ventura reported a 25% increase in homelessness. San Diego, 10% increase. San Bernardino, 7%. Santa Barbara, 3%, Kern, 2%. But then also there were some counties that had decreases. Orange County, Imperial and Pasadena, you can see all had decreases. So let's talk about the challenges. Because clearly addressing the homeless issue is super challenging and complex. We know that because not just the City of Norco, but cities across the state and the nation are struggling trying to address the issue. So let's talk about the San Ana Riverbed. We need to be open and transparent about the challenges with encampment repopulation. We have challenges with encampment repopulation for folks that have never been there that go there and even some of our folks that we have served that are living with mental illness and drug addiction that may have had some challenges with program compliance. So we have to address the challenges related to repopulation. And then also a challenge is budgeting to be able to have money available for cleanup. And to Michelle and Andy's credit, I know that they built that into the budget so that when encampments surface, we have the resources available to immediately clean them up. And Michelle has worked with the Corps of Engineers. Now, they are willing to allow cleanup even during the nesting season, which is a miracle, so long as there's biological assessment and monitoring that no nests are impacted. So we have those mechanisms in place. Also, we know that the homeless issue is going to continue to be impacted. Look at the housing market challenge. You heard about that resident in your town today that became homeless because the house got sold and he can't afford to go to someplace else. So we have 40-year-high inflation. Rent is still through the stratosphere, low vacancy rate, so it's hard to find housing. And there's a lack of affordable housing in Norco and Riverside County. Then on top of that, you've got residents who are living with some very serious life challenges. Mental illness, drug addiction, chronic health issues, physical disabilities. And we're seeing a trend of people that are older that are becoming homeless. I'm not trying to be, like, cast a negative shadow. What we need to do is acknowledge the challenges associated with folks that are living with co-occurring diagnoses. It's not a light switch that you flip on and off and say, "We've ended homelessness." For some people, they have starts and stops and then starts again. And so for some folks that might have not succeeded the first time, I can tell you in Corona, because we would rather have people in shelter receiving services and try to get them on a path. If they've had a hard time the first time, we will give second chances so long as it's not some serious violation. And sometimes the process of stability takes longer for some than others because they're living with all of these layers and challenges. Also, we know Prop 47 has been an issue, especially for law enforcement. Decriminalizing issues related to, not just, so like what used to be felonies that are now misdemeanors. So it affects enforcement of drug use and even theft and other things that it's, you can't blame the whole homeless issue on Prop 47, but it exacerbates the issue and it makes it harder for your Sheriff's Department because of the changes in Prop 47. Also, I think we need to recognize that there is a lack of mandated mental health treatment. We have some people that are living with serious mental illness. I know you, sir, as former law enforcement, you know this firsthand. Some people that are living with mental illness will not accept services. And yet they're dying on the streets. They're causing high impact cost challenges to taxpayers. So we hope that the legislature will not only approve care court, but fund it. It needs to be twofold. And so we hope that there will be enough input to the legislature to have some form of mandated mental health treatment that would help us, give us more tools in the toolbox to address homelessness. Last but not least, just what does the, what value do you get out of Corona managing the program for you? So you didn't have to hire a staff person, which, you know, that's salary and employee benefits. You have assistance with writing grants. As the Chair of the Continuum of Care, I have a couple of roles, looking at regional policy. But I also represent the City of Norco and the City of Corona. In fact, now we're known, it's pretty cool, best practice, as the Corona-Norco region. So we have a seat at the table, we have a vote. We weigh in on policy related to homelessness and housing. We also look at bill tracking and legislative analysis. We do all staff trainings, coordinating with all your city departments. I respond to the media in collaboration with Michelle and your PIO. You have the benefit of the Make It Cozy program. And also we have a partnership with Central Medical Community Clinic where your clients are receiving services. And I want to tell you another cool thing that's not listed there. I was able to negotiate a partnership with the county Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health for what's called a mobile crisis management team. And our council recently approved an MOU between us and them. They're going to give us on the county's dime, a full-time clinical therapist, substance abuse counselor, housing case manager and a peer specialist. We are going to host them for free in the City of Corona City Hall. But this is a field crisis team that is available to not just Corona but Norco. So if, let's say, somebody at a school here said someone's having a mental health crisis, that team would come and actually address the mental health crisis and they have the ability to transport them and connect them to services. So this is a really cool thing because it'll reduce, I'm excited because it'll reduce impact to law enforcement so they can be about first response. So that's another partnership. Also, I do lots of education, not just with your council, but recently presented before your Parks and Rec Commission, they're really awesome. I've done Chamber of Commerce, Town Hall meetings, multiple presentations before the Corona Unified, Corona Norco Unified School District and other presentations. So, and my goal is that we can continue to create more partnerships with the county, its funded partners, and build the system that we've started to achieve even more successes. So I'm sure you feel like you're drinking water out of a fire hydrant. But council members, I'm just so proud of the progress that you have made. I'm proud and honored to work with your staff and make a difference in the town that I live in.
Thank you Karen. Does council have any questions, Catherine?
Yes, I do have a question. And, you know, we started it as the pilot program. Last year was really our first full year. This is looking at our second full year. You know, given the investment that we're making, right, in addressing homelessness in Norco, how can we create some benchmarks and some goals so that we can use those to measure our results, right? To kind of track our progress and evaluate our programs as we go on and also to help provide transparency to our residents and what we're actually doing to tackle the issue?
That's a great question and I'm glad that you asked it. So, you know, I can tell you, we're three years into our strategic plan in the City of Corona. And we recently released a fact sheet just to kind of do a comparison of before and where we are now. So I think that's something that we want to work towards for Norco. You know, you're 15 months in, right? 12, so 15 months in. I think what we want to do, my suggestion to your city manager and your council is that maybe we have some collaborative, I did this in Corona. We had some collaborative meetings where the city departments and council had some discussions about potential benchmarks and performance metrics. And so some examples that we use in Corona, we have what are called systems measures. We know that systems measures, you need multiple components to effectively address homelessness. So we count how many shelter beds did we fund? How many permanent supportive housing units did we fund? How many affordable housing units? What grants did we secure? What new partnerships did we develop with the county and nonprofits? What sub-regional efforts are we involved in? All of those systems things that we need to effectively address the issue. That's one example. Then there's client measures. And these are national measures that the county uses, the state uses, HUD uses. We look at things like how many first-time homeless? How many returns to homelessness after somebody's been in affordable housing? How long are people staying in emergency shelter? Are they languishing in emergency shelter because there's no access to affordable housing? So there's client measures. So those are some things that you can think about in a cool discussion about where do we want to go in terms of what does our system look like? How do we want to measure success? Also, our city has just a regular city strategic plan. We've got the homeless strategic plan, but then the city strategic plan. And so quarterly, we have quarterly benchmarks. So we report on things like Corona Police Department calls for service, homeless calls for service. How many tons of debris did we clean up from homeless encampments? How many people were sheltered? How many people were placed in permanent housing? And so what we do is we look at the challenges that we're facing and then the measures of success for people that we're helping. And then that helps us to know, are we moving in the right path? Do we need course correction? What are the bigger issues outside of our control that we have to continue to advocate for from a legislative perspective? So I think I would be honored to work with your council and the city departments and the public to have those discussions because I think it's important to measure your success.
Thank you Karen.
Kevin, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am. I thank you Karen for all that you do, I really appreciate it. You know, I, because I'm talking remotely and I feel like the Wizard of Oz out here. And can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm just going to relay a story. I was over- I was over in Riverside, and some of you have heard it already, but I was over in Riverside, and I was just getting ready to appear in front of the Riverside City Council. Just two minutes before I was going to go on and speak, I mean, a really hard speech I had to make, and I got a call, and I don't know why I answered it, but I did. And it was a gentleman who said, is this Kevin? And I said, yeah. And he says, you promised to help me. And I said, who is this? Well, once I realized who it was, this is a person that I have no doubt Bonnie and a bunch of other people, maybe in the audience, Ted, Greg, know this person very well. He has been riding the trails in Norco probably for a couple of decades at the very least. And he was, they wouldn't let his dog go into a homeless shelter. He'd been kicked out of his home. He had a, he had a drinking problem, and he was, he said, I'm sleeping in a tent at Fairmount Park, and I desperately need some help. And he was in tears. So I had about another minute and a half, and I called Karen, and I said, Karen, I need some help here. I know this guy. I mean, he's homeless. I can't even believe it. He's like a regular guy. And Karen had the team out there the next morning. They had him housed within a day, I would say, place for his dog. And my understanding is he's now doing very, very well. He's in a treatment program. And I don't know, I know it's a lot of money. I get it. There's a part of me that wants to be real hardcore and say, you know, get up, move on, you know, quit doing stuff on the sidewalk. But on the other hand, there's gentlemen like this man who I know, and I know a bunch of you know him, that just made bad choices and hit hard times. The house he was living in got sold, and all of a sudden, he was without a place to live. But my understanding is, and I hope that's the case, he's on the straight and narrow. I don't know if a lot of people know this, but even before this program, you know, you had Robin feeding people who were close to homelessness. Excuse me. We were very instrumental as a city. We sent letters supporting dogs in homeless shelters. We were very supportive of having, allowing people to park at the Norco College. It's shocking how many women discover after their spouses die that the husband who they thought and had taken care of them for decades really didn't plan for the future. And so those are the people that, I mean, along with the others, the hardcore, the ones we have a lot of trouble with, the ones who keep recidivism. But there are people out there that this program is really going to help. And so that that man just drove home to me why this program is so important. And then the flip side of this too is, is I just, it's my belief, my own personal opinion, Sacramento is actually exacerbating the problem. But the bottom line is, and Karen's actually the one that brought this home to me, she says, we have to deal with what we have, where we are. And the reality is, nobody else is going to help us. In fact, if they can, they're going to dump more problems on top of us, which we'll then have to deal with too. So I think what I'm proud of on this program is that we've got Karen and we've got Robin who's sort of the lead on this thing, and they are spearheading an effort to literally recover lives. And so how much is a life worth? So anyway, I applaud you, Karen. I'm fully in support of this program. And I just want to take a moment. I really want to thank Robin because Robin has worked her little behind off on getting this program to go through. She's shepherded it. She's our go-to person, and I really appreciate the effort. And by the way, the entire council, we've all been behind it. But these two women have just done a stellar job in in helping people survive, and not just survive, but become human again, to have places to live. So anyway, thank you very much. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted, any comments or, I'm sorry, any questions?
No, I don't have anything. Karen, I just want to thank you for all you bringing this program here and putting this together for us over this past year plus. I know there are veterans out there that appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Robin, any questions?
Hopefully, they're easy questions. Karen, on the budget, it talks about like the food cards and those types of things that the clients would potentially need, and there's a budget for those types of things. If there was community outreach enough to gather gift cards to make a significant financial impact, would that free up the budget then to just buy more gift cards? Or could, is there a little bit of shifting around potentially where those dollars being freed up by our community could be used somewhere else within the scope of this program?
That's a great question. There's absolutely flexibility. The way that the contract is structured is there are line items, but they're built in such a way so that if we have the ability to leverage other grant resources or other community donations, then we would be able to free up more resources to focus on the steepest hill to climb, which is to get people housed. And I'll just give you an example. We in Norco, excuse me, in Corona recently amended the CityNet contract to add a budget line in for landlord incentives. And that may sound crazy to some people, but when you are in a housing market as tight as it is with landlords that went through some difficult times with COVID and the moratorium on evictions, or it's even harder now to find doors to rental housing. So imagine if someone has some challenges in their past, it's even a steeper hill to climb. So some of the things that we've done is provided landlord incentives where we will actually write a check, CityNet will, to if a landlord will accept a client as an incentive. So I then, so I think there's opportunities to look at community partnerships so that we could free up more money for like move-in costs. I think sky's the limit, that we don't want to limit ourselves, to be creative, so.
Thank you.
Simple little question, maybe somewhat related to budget, but with the MOU, when will we be seeing the revised MOU? Because the one in our staff report is last year's.
In the near future, we'll be finalizing it, and the action is requesting authority for your city manager to execute it once it's finalized, but I'm sure that it can follow up for your council to have a final copy, no problem, so.
But we should have it before that June, end of June date?
Oh, it should be within the next couple of weeks is the goal. Yeah, and we go through the the normal process where it's drafted.
Oh, I guess that was my question, being it's July. The last one expired June 30th.
Correct.
Right.
Yes. So in a few weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's retroactive to July 1. And then the goal is if your council chooses to do this again in the subsequent fiscal year, Michelle and I have talked, and by then, you know, the program is well-established, we will come complete with a, the current year MOU.
Okay.
So.
All right.
But it's really about the only things that are changing are the date and dollar amount. So not a lot is changing. And then the the budget detail that goes with it, so.
Three little things.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Do we have any public comment cards?
I have one speaker card, Tanya Torno.
Thank you again, Karen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tanya Torno, and I am one of the deputy directors with our county's Housing and Workforce Solutions Department, and I have the pleasure of working with Karen Roper. And I just wanted to, one, share that a main focus at the Continuum of Care is to expand regional capacity. I love the data that Karen shared because it shows how the city's investments are being leveraged with county resources. There were several clients that were assisted with rental assistance and other housing placements that are funded through the county. So I want you to know that we are working very closely with Karen to be strategic in how we leverage the resources that we get through federal, state, and other local dollars that come through our general fund to make sure that we also can help support residents in your city. Of course, we, you know, want homelessness to be an experience for someone that is rare, brief, and non-reoccurring. And and also looking at your data, I was really impressed with the number of people that the teams are serving that are the hardest to reach. When we look at our entire homeless count, 25% of people who experience homelessness are your chronically homeless. They've been homeless for a year or more. That means that the other 75% have been homeless for less than a year. The fact that your teams are focusing on the hardest to serve is, again, just demonstrating that, one, you have a fearless, you know, contractor with CityNet, you have a great leader with Karen that recognizes that, you know, we have to go after the hardest to serve and the reason to address homelessness, or the way to address homelessness is through housing. So, one, I want to thank you for the city-to-city partnership that you have with Corona. We are trying to replicate this model across our entire county, and we're working with other cities to do that. So know that we're using you as a best practice. You are regularly on our lips. Also, I was at the first meeting with Mayor Protem Grandmayr. I don't know if you remember me. I remember the small group and truly want you to know that when we submitted the grant application, the state representative reached out to me and said, hey, we weren't able to fund you this time. Apply again in September. Change nothing in your application, and know that we are going to, you know, be looking to prioritize you. So what the staff, your staff put together and Karen put together is excellent in the eyes of the state. And then lastly, again, I just want to share that Karen is working with us as a COC chair to help share the best practices that you guys are doing. So keep up the good work. I'm here today because I'm very proud of what you're doing, and I love the community that you guys have here in Norco. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you, Dana. I'll bring this back to council for any further discussion or action?
I'll just wanted to add one thing, just that there's a cost to doing nothing, right? So there's a cost to doing something, and there's a cost to doing something, to doing nothing, that, you know, not doing anything really isn't a solution that works. And so if we're not working to address the issue, you know, we have calls to law enforcement, we have calls to our first responders, it ties them up, there's a cost to that. So doing nothing, it's not that it doesn't impact anyone. It does. It impacts our city and our residents a lot. And so it's where are we going to put those funds, and in what way is it going to be the most effective in trying to address the issue? You know, this is something that we hear from our residents, what are you doing? This is exactly what we're doing, partnering, you know, with our neighboring cities. We're a small city. For us to go out and, you know, hire someone like Karen and to write our own strategic plan, first of all, it would take a really long time, and it would cost a lot of money. So we're really trying to be cognizant of of who we are and what we can do, and to do the best that we can to really address the issue because we know that it's a concern for all of us. And, you know, we want to keep our community safe. We want to keep our first responders able to respond to, you know, the emergencies that arise. You know, we want to address our trails, keeping the riverbed, fire hazards, all of that. And so that's really, all of that has come into where we are in this. And so I want to thank, you know, Karen and the city staff who've worked on this, you know, and I'm looking forward to, as we move forward in the program and seeing the successes and measuring it and looking at it, and if there's changes that need to be made, that that we do that so that we can really continue to work on addressing the issue.
Just a couple of things. The first one is, a lot of residents will ask, well, how can we help or what we, what can we do to be a part of the solution? The first one is, anytime you see something, report it to staff. You can go on the city website and report that. The second thing I would do, Norco has always been so generous. If you go onto the CityNet's website, there are ways that you can help to donate gift cards and those things that are going to feed our homeless neighbors while they're in the motel program. And again, that's going to allow some flexibility for folks in our budgets and and where we can leverage some extra dollars. So $5, $10 gift cards for, you know, fast food restaurants is always helpful. And the other thing I'd like to address, when I first got on council there, and I don't think it's changed, complaints about the riverbed and the homeless in the riverbed. That is such a huge mountain to climb, a huge mountain to climb. When you think about the number of agencies and organizations and the environmental impacts and those things that have to be coordinated for work in the riverbed. And so I would just like to give kudos to staff and the whole team for the work that's been done in the riverbed. And I want residents to know that the riverbed is a bunch of little chunks of different, there's some that belong to Norco, there's some that belongs to Army Corps of Engineer, there's some that belong to, you know, Orange County Water Authority, all these agencies. And so we all have like our little pieces that we're responsible for. And I know Norconians, you go through all of them, not even knowing you're going through all of these different jurisdictions, and we're responsible for this one little Norco portion. And I, and I know we have issues, but you had two huge encampments cleaned up in the Norco section within a very, 15 months we've been in the program? That's almost unheard of. So the amount of work that the team has done, I'm just so incredibly proud of. And then I'll just finish with this. You are helping your neighbors. These are our people. So thank you for that, and I hope there's continued support for the program.
Thank you, Robin. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Councilmember Grandmayr? There it goes, sorry. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Dana. Okay. Thank you again, Karen.
Thank you.
Item 5B, Comprehensive IT Assessment and IT Master Plan Report. Good evening, Matt.
Hello and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. What you have before you is item 5B for the Comprehensive IT Assessment and IT Master Plan Report. As mentioned in the staff report, this project was awarded back to Client First in March 2021. This past year, the city staff has worked with Client First through the whole assessment process. This included department workshops and various one-on-one meetings with department heads and city staff members to get a better understanding of how technology works in the city. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to David Kraut and Tom Jacobson from Client First, to explain the importance of the IT master plan as well as review some of the key findings from the assessment.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good.
I'm David Kraut. This is Tom Jacobson, and we'll do this presentation. Feel free to ask questions along the way if you like. Just as a quick reintroduction, Client First is a local government technology consulting firm. We work all across the country. We just so happen to be headquartered in Corona, and we do primarily work with municipalities. We work with over 500 agencies, over 3,000 projects. We've done this project over 100 times, mostly with cities. These are just California examples. Just a little more, I actually happen to live in in Norco coincidentally. Aside from COVID, I'm usually not here because I'm traveling all over the country with other agencies, but been working with cities for about 25 years. About 40 years and about 22 with local governments. All right, what was the objective of this project? It was to align technology, IT and technology with the city's goals and strategies, budget project initiatives to improve resident services, efficiencies in the departments, reduce risk like cybersecurity and other types of operational risks. Planning actually does make things more efficient when you're able to combine projects or prioritize things, right sizing your IT resources to meet the needs, your operational needs of the city, and create a framework for which you can actually implement this plan over multiple years. So our approach was to So our approach was to review and assess technology and IT here at Norco. Again, identify opportunities for IT and cybersecurity improvements, and a big one, too, ID opportunities to improve departmental operations, which includes a lot of different things, communications processes, training, reporting. Those are sort of big areas. But there's over 120 different applications and modules in use in the departments. So we've got findings and assessments. We've sorted out all these projects and initiatives by categories and into years through workshops and processes with the city. I think we've had about two-thirds of all city staff have participated in this project. And then what you have in the report are the preliminary prioritizations and estimated budgets of all those projects. So from a methodology perspective, I mean, it starts out with putting those groups of stakeholders together. I mentioned that about two-thirds of all city staff participated in this project, gathered a lot of information, sorted that, did research, did various workshops with city staff and city management to get through all these prioritizations and all of these budgets. And you guys have the overview budget in front of you.
Assessment of the IT department. Strengths of the department are it's very dedicated, hard-working team. You can tell walking around the city that the IT folks are really well-respected, and that's before they knew people from Apple. The server infrastructure is good, relationship with the departments is good, and they've done a great job of managing technology on a limited budget. Lots of areas for improvement, always with technology. Resiliency, which is the ability to recover from any incident and keep city services running, is a key improvement point. The telephone system, just kind of the way you reach folks, needs improvement. I'll show you some pictures of some foundational things that need improvement. The fiber network's a great asset, but in the last 12 months or so, there've been three fiber outages caused by contractors. So we need to figure out a way to just reduce those, that risk. Operationally, staff's not using very many tools internally, which would be helpful to them and improve their own efficiency. And of course, in the last three or four years, cybersecurity's become a gigantic issue. So there's lots and lots of things to be done there, and a reasonable amount of money that must be spent just to keep up. We do benchmarks for local governments. A couple of those are computers per IT staff, and you can see the Norco staff service about the right number of computers per IT staff is what we see in other, other small to midsize agencies. However, the number of servers that the city, that city staff serve is twice as much as what we see normally. So in one measure, they're doing well. In other measure, boy, they're really a little bit overworked.
All right. In regards to the business applications, strengths, your overall applications fit your city well. Your utilization is pretty on par with other cities. It's normal for there to be gaps in utilization, which I'll explain a little bit more as we go through this. You do have a lot of high priorities. You do need to replace your ERP, which is your finance, payroll, HR system, and your land management system. The vendor announced sunsetting of that system about six months ago. So it's, the sky's not falling, it's not an emergency, but there will be no more improvements to that system made. Most other applications that you use in the city fit your city, your size and your complexities. But there's a lot of training that would be helpful for city staff in use of these, which would make them more efficient in day-to-day operations. We've talked about the ERP, the finance, the land management. That's your planning, your permitting, inspections, code enforcement, it's your partial address management. That system, which is a major system as well, is part of that system that does need to be replaced. The other thing that you don't have currently is you don't have business application analyst support. So your IT function is technical in nature, and Matt and his team do help the department as much as they can, but you don't have any dedicated staff whose role is just to support those core business applications and the users and their use of those systems. So focusing on improvements for those applications in training, you know, a lot of these applications, they're not meant to be self-learned. You either need third-party expertise, you need software vendors, you need process reviews, you need assessment inventorying of what those needs are. They, in and of themselves, some of them are projects, small projects, to maximize use, reporting, data, et cetera. All right, so this slide is really comparing your spending to what we would consider low and high, and peer benchmarks. So the blue on the right side is actually an average of other agencies, mid-sized agencies. The yellow and the green, it's kind of the high and low recommendation, and that really depends, not all cities are the same. Some are largely contract. You guys don't have police and fire. Others don't have utilities, different things like that. So the range is in there. But you can see in some of your historical years, you're spending at the low end of that range, and that's indicative of some of the high needs that you guys have.
Okay, we'll start with foundational IT infrastructure. This is a picture from above the ceiling of your, of the computer room. Cabling was self-installed prior to the current IT folks joining. See, this doesn't meet any best practice that you can think of. So that needs to be redone, and I'll show you another picture here in a little bit. Great. The only thing I can see about it is I've seen worse. So another thing that really would be helpful to you is to move to Office 365. You've had a couple of cybersecurity incidents related to it. Risk would be reduced if you moved to Office 365, which is in the, file servers and storage require upgrades, and additional work on cloud storage and recovery would be helpful. Talked a little bit about fiber network. These are both pictures from your computer room. The one on the left is an older rack that the IT team hasn't gotten to yet, and the one on the right is a newer rack, and you can kind of see the difference, and that's one of the reasons I, there's some issues with the room itself and the way it was laid out, and we talked about, it kind of grew organically, so there's no way for staff to actually move things around, better organize them. So really, the, above the ceiling and the room itself needs to be reorganized in order to have more flexibility and to clean it up like the way the one on the right is. We talked a little bit before about IT operations toolset. One of the things we'd like to see the city do is implement a help desk system. It would help the various, the staff members keep track of service tickets rather than being in an email queue, and they had to spend all day talking to each other, back and forth about who's going to do which one. Network monitoring and alert soft, software would reduce kind of, several additional
Okay, business department objectives, again, increasing online available services and a new land management system will, will add some of that for you. Application utilization is key to improving departmental operations, efficiency, productivity, reducing manual processes, having better reporting, automating workflows. That's all about those business applications. So in order to improve them, your people need to, you got to have the right systems, and they have to have the right training, and they have to have the right reporting and skillsets to do that and the support for that. Also, improving GIS capabilities and integrating that with some of these applications would improve in a number of different ways. Okay, so budget, so you can see now, one thing I want to make sure that you understand is that the budgets in the plan are the budgets for the individual project initiatives. That's not your five-year IT budget for the city. Those are individual budgets for each of those project initiatives. Some of those are multi-year, or there's continuing costs. So, but if you were to compare this to the other graph that we had on top of your normal IT spend, you, for a few years, are going to have to spend above even high recommendations, just to sort of catch up. All right, so the items that are in the budget metrics that you have, or matrix that you have, those were already in your 2023 fiscal year in budget, so those have already been done. Another point, again, is that it's not all new spending, because in every year, you're doing some projects that are technology or IT-related each year. So it's, again, it's not all net new. And then in that matrix, there's a lot of information about sources of where different funds are going to come from for those projects. A lot of them are capital-related projects. And they will all follow your normal budget process, as in your normal procurement policies and procedures.
Does council have any questions? We could start with Kevin. You there?
Yeah, I'm here. I was just curious, as, as you have to spend the money, are things going to keep escalating cost-wise, so that we might find ourselves in a situation? I mean, obviously, we have to do it, and I'm actually delighted we're doing this. I know a lot of cities right now, we're spending a lot of money on their upgrades, and this is actually a dream come true. I mean, I really have to give kudos to Andy, because I'm sure he remembers, when I first got on council, we were in, we did not have a very good system. But are we going to be able to really predict what the cost of this is going to be?
I would encourage you to, there are some best practice project descriptions in a more detailed assessment report that talk about sustainability planning and replacement planning. You do have some big project expenditures coming up, but through those best practices, you can do longer-range plans, you know, when you're typically going to need to replace major systems. You have spikes now, because you're going to replace some major systems that you weren't expecting. But you can get more predictive in the long range through, through planning.
I guess what I'm thinking is, I mean, I saw what you were talking about, but let's say you, down the line, you're planning on, just for, not that you'll do this, but you need to buy five computers. And how do we know what a computer's going to cost in three years? I'm just curious if you can get your crystal ball out and let me know how much this might increase. I guess you can't really tell me that, can you?
Well, we can tell you some. Computer prices have been relatively stable up until about six months ago, when everything became kind of, you know, supply chain constrained, and prices started fluctuating all over, but mostly on the up way.
Two-by-four, they used $1,000, now costs $17.
In one week, we had, we were doing work for another client. We had computers go from $650 to $850 apiece, down to $810, just depending upon, you know, who we talked to and what day. I can tell you, one other thing, I presented to a city council that we've been working with for five years on technology, and the one thing that surprised us is the escalating cost of cybersecurity needs. So those have not remained consistent. For most of our clients, they're implementing a new cybersecurity tool every quarter. So that's the one area that we've been surprised in the last few years. Otherwise, we do really quite well in our, with the clients we work with. We're generally on or under budget.
I'm really excited about this, and again, Andy, I want to give you a lot of credit for this, and of course, Matt. But Andy, thank you very much for, during your tenure, moving Norco from the Flintstone era to the modern era of technology. So I really appreciate that.
Just need to fix the wires. All of it is in there.
Catherine? Robin? Any questions?
So I'm looking at your numbers here, and, and that's based upon your recommended high, 6% is what you're, in your thing here, it says, yeah, your recommended high is 6% benchmark. Is that what we're looking at to get those? Is that what, I mean, you're costing, and so as I look through and I budget by the summary plan budget analysis you did on this report, in five years, this is going to cost us $7.3
So a couple of things. The 6% is an average recommended high, but that depends on the different agencies. Agencies are different, their level of staffing, their number of applications. So that's a benchmark spend. The $7.5 million that you're referring to, if you were to implement all of those project budgets, that would be the cost, but you are normally doing some projects each year. So it's not $7 million in net new cost. And some of those are going to be...
This is already, what we, you would anticipate in improving our system as we go through. Is that correct?
Some would be normal, because in each, even in those historical years, you had, you had technology projects in there.
Correct.
Right.
I just, I look at that price tag and, and, don't get me wrong, that's what you guys are here for. You check, you've given us the optimum. Then you have, it's our decision to figure out where we're at. And, you know, not everybody has the, you know, the calculator that Andy has, but I know Matt and Mark do a good job out there, so I appreciate what they're doing. But then I just look at that price tag, and if we go this route, we just, as a council, have to understand, this is price tag. And I'm curious, is Lisette, where are we? Are you critical on that financial programs? Since we're, we're dead in the water, if there's, there's no upgrades to this thing at all?
It'll still be service, but as you can tell with lots of companies that are struggling with just, you know, getting right now assistance and help with help tickets, it's taking longer. It would be great to do a full implementation of a new system from the beginning. There's a lot of things that, you know, are not implemented, that we probably have that, you know, we never looked into.
Okay, and the reason I ask, because we just went to the portal to streamline all this thing for the residents to pay their bills. But is that, this is above and beyond this? This is your internal?
No, this is our financial system, so...
Financial system that we have, that where we track all what comes in and what goes out, how your budgets...
It includes our utility billing process, but the water pullers, it's separate, that talks to our financial system.
Okay, but it's, what I'm getting at here is that we're at a point where that system, you can't upgrade it anymore, we're done with it? Is that what, I mean, that's what you said, right?
No. Oh, go ahead.
They kind of coin it sunsetted, meaning they're going to continue to support it from, from a help desk perspective. If something breaks, they'll fix it, but there will be no new improvements in that system. They eventually want everyone to move off that system onto one of their other products.
Okay, all right, just, all right. Some just news to me, okay? So I'm just trying to, when I see this price tag, I just wonder what's going on.
So the system is 12 years old? Actually, more than that, it's nearly 20 years old. After some time, the worst software companies make their money is their upgrade, their transition to newer and better systems. And so with the acquisition that has taken place with that company, they have made a decision that they are no longer going to be implementing the old system. Doesn't mean it's dead, it just simply means they are not spending additional money and making investments into developing that system. They want their clients to migrate to a newer system, which is essentially how they make money. Migrating to that is not something the city has to do within the next year or two. Certainly, they have said they will continue to support the system, but after nearly 20 years, the systems do change, and the newer and better systems do come online, and at some point, the city would have to migrate to this new system. And it costs a significant amount of money.
And so that would also incur costs in training, the new staff, our staff on this, on these new programs?
Training is a continuous thing. Whether you have a new system or old system, if you want to get the most out of any system, training is continuous, because this software systems are continuously changing. So unfortunately, for smaller, for smaller cities, they just don't have enough staffing to invest the time that is required in training. They are struggling to do their day-to-day job, and the amount of time that is required to gain in-depth knowledge with respect to this system sometimes is lacking with smaller cities. And that's why one of the recommendations you see in this, in this report is hiring a business applications systems analyst person, and that already has been approved and included in the budget for this current fiscal year. So that will go a long way in terms of providing that training and support for staff.
So we've already budgeted that in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Robin?
I just have one. In your experience, once these systems are in place and everybody's adequately changed, could you ballpark up what change there is in efficiency or processes within the organization?
Well, the answer is yes, you could, but it's really expensive to do that kind of a study. So we do do a lot of assistance in helping people do process reviews and do those procurements and negotiate contracts and help them implement. We don't represent any software companies, we always represent the agency, but you have hundreds of processes. So there are high-level things that you can do that are quite obvious, and the assessment report actually has specific examples of things that could be automated that are manual. It's not in the packet, but, so there's a whole description of that project as an example, and there's a whole list of things that they still do manual, they do with paper, or it's not automated. So those are great examples, and you can do some high-level calculations on those.
And then one other question. In your experience with the technology systems and those types of things, improvements to those systems, does that improve work environment and/or morale for organizations as well?
Absolutely, I believe so, because there's a lot of frustrations that people have, that they still have to do something a certain way, it takes a whole bunch of steps, it involves a lot of people. There are automated workflows in some of these systems where, I mean, there's steps that you don't even have to do anymore. The system's doing things, it's thinking, it's automatically routing approvals are, you know, they're digitized, you know, you can do certain things on your phone, on tablets, from anywhere, not just at your desk, those types of things. So that does improve, takes a lot of stress out of people. You know, in the last 20 years, in, in local government, you know, everybody's been asked to do more and more and more, right? So technology helps with some of that, but when you get behind on some of these systems or you're not current in your training, then it sort of slows down, and that puts more workload on your employees.
Thank you.
And Matt, you can jump in on this too, if you want to. Where do you start? Okay? I mean, I'm looking at this, and I know you eat an elephant one bite at a time, but, okay, so we got rid of our rotary phones, and, but our phone system's obsolete. We got a rat's nest in the ceiling, right?
Right.
Okay, those are cleanup things. Where do we start with operational improvements? You know, I look at whether to say Public Works or Land Use, Planning Department, Building and Safety, where so much of it is just physical paper, and how do, it seems that's what we need to kickstart to make us more efficient, not only for our residents and our staff. I've given Matt examples over the months and years, but how do we start that process?
If you touch on that, I think one of the most important things that we've gotten out of this is that we need to improve our infrastructure, especially the backend of it, before you actually start to implement some of these software upgrades and changes. And then part of that too is also doing those business process reviews in all departments. But before you do that, you need to have that backbone set up and get your house in order before you can move forward with those projects.
Okay.
Well, that's the rat's nest in the ceiling.
Right.
And the operational tools to make the IT department more efficient, really work better day-to-day, really transition to moving, to helping the departments. Now, the good news is, we are the staff budget for the business analysts, so they can start working on some of the low-hanging fruit on the business side, and some of those improvements early on.
Okay.
But it's also where you start, it's really the purpose of this master plan.
Correct.
There are several initiatives that are, have been laid out here in order, or at least the years, we anticipate to implement those things. But that's really the, the purpose of this report, is identify, identify all the areas that improvements are needed, and that we can take them one step at a time. Before, this is for department.
Okay.
If I could piggyback on that, just...
Sure.
So the very first initiative in the detailed document is actually a technology governance model and suggestions, a committee, if you will. I used to have a slide, sometimes I used, you know, how to eat an elephant one bite at a time. My slide was a herd of elephants, and that's what you really have, because you have 74 major project initiatives here. They're broken down by year, so they are prioritized, and you are, the city needs to do this. IT cannot do this whole plan by themselves. It's not just an IT department plan, it's a business department plan. So they all need to be involved in it, they all need to take ownership of their core business applications in their departments, those are their operations. And so it's going to take an effort, and it's going to take everybody's involvement.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, Dana, do we have any cards?
I have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Bring it back for any further council discussion and action. Appreciate your time. Before any other comments, Andy, I wanted to thank you and thank Matt, but especially you, I know this is one of your goals that you've wanted to accomplish for a long time, and I'm glad we've been able to do that. Appreciate all the work that you've done. We had that, we had that conversation, John, and that was the direction. Andy had to stay till it was done. Damn, look, it's here. Any other further discussion? Catherine?
No, just a second, that this is really needed. I'm really excited, because it will also help us to do our job, our staff to do our job, and residents to be able to, you know, interact and get their needs met by the city. And then, you know, the, the plan and the budget and how it's broken down, it's really laid forth a great plan that we can execute, so.
Anything else?
Oh, well, I was going to make a motion to receive and file this, since it's what it is. I mean, it's a plan, and I think it's, that's what we got, we had to have a plan, so make the motion to receive and file.
Second.
Councilmember Alman? It did it? Does it say yes?
But yes.
Okay. And then, Councilmember Bash? No, it came up. Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Let's go ahead and take a five, six, seven-minute little break. I can see Kevin jumping up and down, so. Thank you Dana. Let's go ahead and take a five, six, seven minute little break. I can see Kevin jumping up and down, so. This is strategic plan direction number three. And that will be our communications manager.
Before I turn it over to Kelly who will deliver the staff report, just want to make a general comment. If you recall, we brought this issue to you about exactly three months ago. To take a look at not only just how EDAC is structured, but the environment that EDAC conducts business. We felt at that time that the structure, as well as the EDAC operating under the Brown Act, was not conducive to EDAC meeting its objectives as led out in the city's municipal code. What would happen after that meeting, we formed a subcommittee, which included two members of the city council, and the planning director, the senior planner, myself, the communications manager. And we studied the issue and did some research, including contacting several similar cities in the county and outside of the county to see how they are handling this situation. And following that, we came up with recommendations that are basically guided on the understanding that for this process to work, it needs to be a hands-on working process that are conducted outside of the Brown Act type meeting. And we have carefully looked at the situation and made some recommendations here for the city council to consider. And that is what Kelly is going to provide a report on.
Good evening. So I'll probably skip through some of these slides then based on Andy's introduction. So just as general background, the city's Economic Development Advisory Council was created by the city council in 1990 to help coordinate an ongoing development strategy aimed at increasing sales tax revenues and improving the economic viability of the city. Since the creation of the Economic Development Advisory Council, not only has the commercial development process become a lot more confidential, but there have been numerous changes to the EDAC membership composition. And these various circumstances have restricted the governmental body from achieving its purpose. In February 2022, just a few months ago, the city of Norco approved its 2022 strategic plan, which consists of five strategic directions that are dedicated to fulfilling the organization's mission statement and preserving Norco's rural lifestyle. Strategic direction three of the strategic plan is dedicated to economic development and financial stability. And that direction includes a corresponding action plan to expand economic development efforts, as well as a sub-action plan to determine the role and responsibilities for the Economic Development Advisory Council. So that sub-action plan speared the creation of the subcommittee that Andy referenced. At its regular meeting of April 6th, the city council created a subcommittee to work with city staff to address this strategic plan, direction and action plan, and review the structure, composition, role and responsibilities of the Economic Development Advisory Council. The subcommittee, as Andy stated, was comprised of council member Alaman, council member Hoffman, the current EDAC chair, and various staff members. The subcommittee reviewed the internal economic development structure of various Riverside County municipalities with comparable sales tax allocation totals, development opportunities, and marketability. And those cities are listed in your staff report. After reviewing the restrictions associated with the current Economic Development Advisory Council format, the internal economic development efforts of comparable municipalities, and Norco's current and future economic development goals and opportunities, the subcommittee recommended that the existing Economic Development Advisory Council be disbanded. And as part of that discussion, the subcommittee recommended that a new city manager-led economic development working group be established to assist with Norco's economic development efforts. So this new working group would assist staff in executing the economic development action plans identified in the strategic plan, and the working group would help staff identify and vet revenue generating businesses that are compatible with Norco's rural lifestyle. So as part of the recommendation, the subcommittee, as I just said, recommended that the working group be overseen by the city manager. And with this structure, meetings would be held privately, as opposed to being held publicly in accordance with the Brown Act. The subcommittee recommended this revised structure so that the membership is able to openly discuss and provide feedback on these confidential matters, including conceptual development proposals that are premature for public input. And this is probably one of the biggest frustrations of our current EDAC members is that a public session just really limits conversation and discussion. So as for composition, the subcommittee recommended that the working group be comprised of six members. Obviously, the city manager would be one of those members, and the city manager would appoint or include additional staff as needed. The subcommittee or the working group would also include two council members, one planning commission member, and two community members. And those community members would be qualified if they're an Norco resident with valuable expertise in a relevant economic development discipline. And this description meets some of the current criteria of our general EDAC members. As far as terms, the subcommittee recommended that all members of the working group be appointed for two-year terms, and the subcommittee did not recommend term limits. The subcommittee recommended that the working group meet monthly. The city manager would determine that meeting schedule with input from the membership. And the subcommittee recommended that members commit at least two hours per month. As far as an absence policy, the subcommittee recommended that the city manager review attendance records. Regarding recruitment and appointment, the subcommittee established a few procedures for the various member types. For the planning commission member, they recommended that the planning commission as a whole appoint a representative every two years, and that member must have at least two years remaining on their planning commission term. For community members, the city clerk's office would conduct recruitment for the two community members. As you know, the city clerk's office already conducts recruitment for commissions. However, this would differ from commissions because the city manager would review those applications and ultimately appoint the two community members to serve on the working group. There are a few items listed in your staff report that the subcommittee did not determine action on, and we're requesting feedback from the city council. So the first item is in regard to recruitment and appointment for council members. There are two options here. Option A would be the mayor appoints two council members in conjunction with the annual regional board and commission appointments. That usually takes place in January, I believe. And option B would be that the city council as a whole votes to appoint two council members, similar to an ad hoc committee. And the second item that doesn't have a recommendation is in regard to compensation for community members. Currently, the city of Norco offers compensation to commission members that are appointed by the council, but does not have a compensation policy for people appointed to private subcommittees. So the subcommittee is requesting feedback on that item. So this obviously differs from Norco's current format for its Economic Development Advisory Council. However, there is no industry standard for economic development governmental bodies. It really is what's best for that organization and what works best for their format. The subcommittee thoroughly evaluated various options and ultimately determined that this recommendation is appropriate for the city of Norco. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. As part of the overall motion or direction, however you go, we would need feedback in regard to these two items that didn't have a recommendation.
Thank you.
I probably should make one comment because just so we don't get confused. I didn't realize the Brown Act was such a significant issue. The council really can't form and appoint members to a commission or a committee, whether it's temporary or otherwise, without resulting in it being subject to the Brown Act. So all the things that you have here, that is what you want to do. But essentially, it's the city manager's job to handle those things. As long as it's under the auspices of the city manager, then there are no Brown Act issues. But once the council gets its hands in it, there are.
Does that mean that the council or that the city manager would appoint those two council members?
Yeah.
Okay, so then option A and option B are null and void.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. It just, what you're doing is blessing the concept, and the city manager is the one that will appoint and run it, which is the idea. I mean, it wasn't intended to be a council-level commission to begin with.
Okay.
So then they would really just need to decide on the compensation direction. Okay.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Catherine, Robin, Ted? Kevin?
I do have one.
Questions? I'm really delighted in the direction. I was really disappointed not to be on this committee because I'd been pushing for it for years, but I sort of stepped aside. But I think that the result is fantastic. I think it's perfect. I'm very excited to see what a committee like this can do. And good job to the two people that put this together. And good job to Andy and Kelly and anybody else who was involved. When can we start?
Tomorrow, Kevin. Ted, question?
Yeah, I do. And this is to John. So if we were to appoint, or even if they were appointed by the mayor, that throws the whole Brown Act in, even though it's...
That's defined as a legislative body, subject to the Brown Act.
I have responsibility back to the city manager to form, to put these community members or these council members and everybody else on this thing. Maybe that was the whole point? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, good, bad, or indifferent. I didn't realize until tonight that the Brown Act was the most significant issue in terms of the ability to interchange ideas and things like that. I mean, if you adopted this as it's proposed, it's fine, terrific, perfect. But it will also subject to the Brown Act. If you don't want it subject to the Brown Act, it's the city manager responsibility who reports back to you, and you can do that any way you want to.
And the reason we don't, it's the Brown, because of the nature of what this group will do, this commission will do, is we don't want to be the last part of the approval process. We want to be the beginning of the approval process to start the economic development. And because of the Brown Act, and what you can and can't talk about, that's the hard part about it. So that would make it easier to avoid that. But it's just very frustrating to see that because...
We've had this discussion over the years, a thousand times, that the Brown Act provides for transparency, but the flip side is that it's a terrible way to do business.
Yeah, I mean, I just, that's a lot of pressure on the city manager to deal with that. So, okay, well, thank you.
Dana, do we have any public comment cards?
I don't have any public comment cards on this item.
Thank you. Just bring this back for discussion and action. So I guess what remains is just the question of compensation for the two community members that would be appointed by the city manager. And...
I also include the planning commissioner? I think it would increase them.
I don't know.
I think they should just do it out of the goodness of their heart.
Well, yeah, I mean, everybody else...
Replying for a volunteer position, so...
Same time. Everybody else there is getting paid. Planning commissioner, I wouldn't think. You get a stipend being on the planning commission.
Ask him to go to another meeting.
Well, John will remember. When we had the Maverick hearings...
You might treat it like the measure R or some of the other committees. That you didn't provide a stipend and kind of waited and see how things worked out, see if anybody asked.
I was just gonna say, when we had our additional meetings before, John, planning commission refused to attend additional meetings. So they were paid more.
I just feel like you're asking for a two-hour commitment per month. You know, I really don't think that it needs to be compensated. I know you said everybody else there is getting compensated. I could probably make a fairly strong argument that the council members at that point in time, depending on what other meetings they've been to, are not being compensated for being there. So, you know, I think there's community member... I know there are community members that love this community and are economically and business-minded that would gladly step up and put a couple hours a month in to better their community. So I would forego the compensation.
I always feel like, you know, if we're asking experts to come in and help us, that we should compensate them as such. I'm also, you know, John mentioned, you know, starting it and then looking at it, right, at a later date. And I'm also okay with that, to see it's a new program and seeing how it goes. It is a structure that we don't have currently.
I think that's essentially what you did with EDAC.
I think they started getting compensated after like 18 years. Yeah. Yeah, that's a very recent change.
Yeah, but EDAC is getting compensated now, but they weren't when EDACs began.
A whole bunch of things came out of it. So I don't know about the compensation, but if they get passionate about this, they could end up doing a whole bunch of really cool things. So I don't know how you compensate that. You're looking for passionate people who want to help the city and have an expertise. It's giving back.
So is that yes or no, Kevin?
I really think that if this thing works as well as it did at one point, you're gonna have people putting in five, 10, 15 hours, sometimes 20 hours a week. We used to travel, went to all the businesses in town. The sign was designed out of this. I mean, early days of Silver Lakes, discussions there occurred. A lot of things came out of EDAC in those days because it was essentially driven by two council members. So, and you kind of went out and found the people that you needed to use as your experts. I don't know if it'll work that way now, but in terms of compensation, I guess just match what you're paying, let's say your park and rec commission.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, it's kind of the compensation. That's our last item with this, isn't it?
Just, I would anticipate that whoever is on this, they might be required and have a two-hour meeting, but that they would spend more than those two hours, you know, researching and looking at things and going into the community and doing the work. So even if they were compensated for a meeting, they would be doing more than a meeting's worth of work and effort.
I'm fine with the compensation. Ted?
No, I'm kind of in the way of John. I just, see how it works. If it gets to be where our recruitment or it needs to be, then we'll look at compensating them. I just, but I can go either way on this. We're only talking three people.
Mayor, can I add just a couple things? I know we discussed the compensation by adding all of our commissions and committees to our compensation schedule. It was, we were having lack of applications coming in, lack of participation by our community. So it was an incentive to get more people applying, more people interested, and kind of valuing their time. So it could be something, we do the same thing as if we're not getting the applications for this, if we're not getting the interest to serve. Because we are asking for people with expertise, we could do the compensation at a later date, or we could just start the compensation now to make sure that we do get more of an application pool. I hope that helps a little bit.
Okay. Well, does someone like to make a recommendation?
So what we were just discussing is the planning commissioners that sit on the architectural review board, they don't get an additional stipend for attending those meetings outside of their planning commission meeting. They just get the one stipend for their monthly meeting. So if you see this in a similar way, then that's already a set precedent. They just get the one stipend for their monthly meeting. So if you see this in a similar way, then that's already a set precedent.
Thank you, Kevin. I, I make a motion that we just go ahead and approve this as it is and don't worry about compensation. We'll see how recruitment goes.
I'll second that.
With the change that the city manager will appoint the two council members.
And then we'll look at compensation afterwards, later. Okay, I'm fine with that. Have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Please vote.
Good report, thank you.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, Dana. Item five D, discussion item on residential cottage food operations. Alma?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you. Mr., Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this agenda item five D is just, it's basically a discussion item and more so an information item on residential cottage food operations are known as CFOs and micro enterprise home kitchen operations. And these are both operations that are intended for residential zones within a city. The, these type of operations have been basically empowered through assembly bills. The food handling part of these operations are administered through the county or what is the Department of Environmental Health Services. And any applicable zoning and business licenses are handled at the city level. Just briefly, as far as a cottage food operation, what that is, is it allows certain low-risk food products to be prepared and packaged in private homes in California. These are only low-risk food products that are not, non- potentially hazardous. And I did include a, a list of those type of, examples of those type of foods that could be sold or, you know, created or made with, through the whole, the cottage food operation business. There are two types of cottage food operations, a class A and a class B. Just briefly, a class A is a direct sales, basically from person to person. And just an example of how these items are sold are direct sales that take place at bakery sales, certified farmers, markets, and temporary events. So basically, you don't have to have people come to, come to the home. You can go and sell your products in, in different locations. The other class is indirect or direct and indirect sales where a third-party retailer is involved. And this is a retail food facility that holds a valid health permit, including markets, restaurant, bakeries, and delis are considered a third-party retailers. Both of these classes, you know, require a, require clearance from the county. They must certify in their application that they comply with zoning requirements within their jurisdictions. And there are currently eight county-approved CFOs or cottage food operations in the city of Norco. And they all have city of Norco business license, home occupation business license. And the, per the requirements of the assembly bill that passed the, that allowed these CFOs, the city can use the home occupation business license to help regulate, to control traffic, noise, et cetera. As far as the micro enterprise home kitchen operations, these, these micro home, home kitchen operations are a new type of retail food facility that will allow an individual to operate a restaurant in their private residence. Basically allows the actual serving of meals on the premises, is a food facility that is operated by the resident of a private home, at a private home. Food can be stored, prepared, and served to customers. Food has to be made, cooked, and served on the same day with no more than thirty meals per day or a total of sixty meals per week. And I did attach also just a brief summary from the county that kind of summarizes the, how the operation is run. This operation allows one full-time employee and cities cannot prohibit these type of operations, these type of micro home kitchen operations. They must be allowed in residential zones. We currently don't have any in the city. I looked on the county website. We don't have any operating in the city where that would, you know, have a, a legal clearance from the county or any business license with the city. Should one come about in the city, the process for that would basically be for the city to issue some kind of business license. So again, this is just intended for information purposes. Any direction also is within the, given to staff is within the purview of the city council. And with that, I will conclude and answer any questions that the council may have. And again, this is intended to be an information item and to open up any discussion as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Counsel, I have any questions to staff?
I do. I, I don't have a problem with the cottage food operations. I think that's pretty cool. The, the micro enterprise home kitchen, that's a whole new ballgame.
It really is, yes.
I mean, you're putting a little mini restaurant, sit-down restaurant, in somebody's house?
That's, that's, yes, that is correct.
And what's the limitations on that?
There, there are the limitations that, that I was able to take a look at. The food has to be made, cooked, and served on the same day with no more than thirty meals per day or a total of sixty meals per week. And you can't have signage. So there, there are limitations that would help administer them, you know, within the city. But yes, in, in essence, you are correct.
There's no parking requirement, something like that? We can't do any of that, right?
No, the statute says somewhat ridiculously that they're considered to be a residential use and the city doesn't have any ability to restrict or prohibit them.
Wow.
The geniuses in Sacramento decided this was a solution to the pandemic.
I understand the cottage food. I understand people making bakeries and having cookies and all that stuff in there. That, that's cool. That's a home business. But this is a little restaurant sitting in a neighborhood.
Yeah, the, the only, and I guess that, what would discourage it, maybe one of the reasons we don't have them, is it is overseen by the county health department. And there are a lot more regulations than, I mean, it's not, not you can make food in your kitchen and somebody can come out and eat at your table. It's, it really is inspected and treated like a real restaurant.
Well, and that's what I'm saying is, I'll go back to Chad, when he talked about the restaurant industry and we have restaurants, we have grease traps, we have all kinds of different, we have food handling. He's got to worry about disposal of the edible garbage and everything else. And now you got, somebody's got a little micro restaurant in their house? And I'm just, I'm just concerned, and we have no control on that? How do, what do we do with the health department when we have a drainage problem or somebody has that? I, I, I'm just looking at that. I, I mean, I understand that, I don't have the problem with the cottage food, but the opera, the, the home kitchen, my little restaurant thing, that's just weird. It's weird.
Alma, I have a question.
Yes.
On that, is, on the CFOs, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm very supportive of that. But on the, the home kitchen, and it addresses refuge storage area, so would we have to have a city standard trash enclosure?
To the best of my knowledge, that's no.
So what would be then considered the, the storage area that's listed on this with environmental health? Item number three.
I see.
Refuge, storage area.
Are you, you're looking at the handout?
Yeah. The printout for the home kitchen operation.
Refuge.
I mean, I would think you'd have to have.
I see that. Oh. Well, I'm not aware of requiring a commercial type of refuge storage area. I, I, I just don't have the answer to this.
I guess that would be part to find out.
Yeah, I see that here.
If that's what it says in the area.
That's correct. That's what it says here. I would assume, and again, I would assume it would be a place for, if customers were to come, to be able to dispose of their once they're done eating, you know?
Well, let's put it this, I mean, I think the, the parking to me would be in concern and. So let's say I invite ten of my concrete guys. Let's go to breakfast and we go in ten trucks next door to Ted's house, okay? Right. And we can go three times a week and eat breakfast there. But, so I, you know, I know we don't have any, but I'm just saying that.
No, I understand.
You have parking in, impacts and then we just throw it out the window because we don't know any better.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly what, I know, I don't know exactly what you're looking at, but the statute, and are you looking at the code section? Because the statute unfortunately says, a city, county, or city and county shall not prohibit the operation of, require a permit to operate, require the property, of the property for, or levy any fees on, or impose any other restrictions on a micro enterprise home kitchen operation, residential dwelling for zoning purposes, unfortunately. My mind's cutting off. The, the only thing you can do is, they can't post signage or other advertising and they have to be in compliance with local noise ordinances.
And deal with environmental health.
Yeah, and then deal with the county.
So, so I have a question.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So, yeah, I know we cannot stop these, but, and, and I don't want to actually. I mean, I, I think this is a sign of the times. More and more people want to work from home and so the baking of bread and all the different things we're looking at tonight. But how will we, what will be the process? You'll get one that will go, because if you look at the rules, there's a lot of things they have to do. And so you're gonna get a whole bunch of people that are just gonna open up these little restaurants maybe and they won't do any of the rules. What, what will it take, John? Will we have another code enforcement nightmare?
Yeah, well, I mean, about nightmare, but, but that is one thing the statute says, is that none of the approvals prohibit the city from enforcing its nuisance regulations. And for us, nuisance means violation of the code.
Something in place or are we gonna go continue over the five years?
Unfortunately, there's nothing we can put in place. I mean, the state has said, you know, city, you can't restrict them, you can't charge them fees, you can't prohibit them. It's a residential use, even though we all know that it's not.
So who, let's say, for example, they have two people working there or they have, they're bringing food in or the operator shall successfully pass and approve accepted food safety. What if they don't do that?
We, we can cite them or presumably with a little shoving, the county can cite them.
Yeah, we, we should be, I mean, that's something that we would refer over to the county for enforcement.
To the extent the county does.
The one thing I want is I want to make sure they're clean. And, and that we as a city, let's say you do get somebody who's abusing it, I want to be able to make sure in a timely manner, we can move them out and, and get them to cease and desist. Otherwise, I mean, because I have a hunch, not a lot of people are gonna do this. It's pretty, pretty difficult. This is gonna be pretty difficult to follow. And if you have the, the health inspectors coming in, I mean, they're gonna be making sure the refrigerator, I mean, a couple, I've been to a couple of these operations and they're really, not like this, but they're very clean, they've got up-to-date stuff. And I just wonder how many people will be able to like, just to afford a refrigerator that can take the test from a county inspector.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think one of the reasons why you haven't seen them in Norco and a lot of other places is because they're not economically viable.
Well, and I agree with that, but we do have some people that are looking to do, one of the things that's coming is they do a coffee and pastry thing. And they have different pastries and they, they, they home prepare the pastries. So I, that, that might be viable and you, you have like, it's a date night or you have a, you know, an anniversary or a birthday or something like that. Anyway, I'm just wondering, I want to make sure we can.
Your dates, your date nights are coffee and roll?
You know what? No, I'm just trying to figure out, I want to make sure that if these things take off, and I, I suspect you're right, they probably won't too much. I just want to make sure we can enforce the law. Or, or do we call the county, Alma? Which one do we do?
Well, initial, initially it's clearly health department. It depends on what the violation is, of course.
That's correct.
I mean, if they're having parties in the front yard and yelling and screaming, that's violation of our ordinance. That, that we prosecute, but if it's.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Robin?
So Alma, I have a question. This I'm sure was put before us for a specific reason. Can you tell me why this was brought to council? What, what spurred this coming to council?
The reason it came to council, it was something, one of the items that was discussed at, well, it wasn't discussed, but it was brought forward by one of our council members and it was voted to bring back as a discussion item.
Okay, so was it because there was a cottage home operation that had too much traffic in front of its house? Was it some, because there was a something, right, that happened for it to come here? And I don't think it was a micro kitchen complaint. I think it was a co, a home cottage operation had too much traffic in front of the house and somebody had a complaint. And so, you know, I hear county health and, and this and that. We don't have a lot of hands-on where I see our potential impact is in the Norco municipal code under the home occupation business. What can we do as a council who have all said, we support this, make the municipal code more friendly for those folks that are doing this? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, although.
We're talking about a lot of stuff we don't need to talk about tonight. So.
I was gonna say, one of the things that you need to think about is the impact of making CFOs, making the code more friendly, it applies to anybody.
These micro kitchens, yeah. And I, like in any home business, I, I understand that. And I would say that the municipal code is probably okay, okay, the way it stands. So my next question would be, how is that specific clause of the municipal code enforced? How and when?
Which specific clause?
Where it says, the traffic to the home occupation business cannot, hold on, I have it in my notes. Yeah. Yeah, eighteen thirty-two, shall not cause greater pedestrian or vehicular traffic to the dwelling and garage in which it is conducted than is normal for the zone in which it is being conducted.
Code enforcement and, and we do it. I mean, CFOs not so much, but.
Well, and that's what we're talking about tonight, though, John, and I know code enforcement does it. So why did we have one CFO that had complaints and then we have other CFOs that don't? Is it because of the number of traffic or is it because the one neighbor is mad and called? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's where it usually is. The latter.
Well, and that's what I want to know. Like, why are we talking about this tonight? I want, want the story.
Traffic was backed up. Staff did observe more than normal traffic.
Yes, that's correct. So, 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 so just, just to kind of bring it together, as I indicated in the staff report, we do have eight cottage food industries. They all have a business license and, and how they administer it in the city is through the home occupation business license. We've only gotten complaint on one and it was because of the traffic. So, you know, we were able to, the business license for that operation has been issued, you know, they have it. If they have occasional visitors coming to the house, it's not a problem. It's where it creates an impact to the community where, you know, we did observe, our, our code officer did observe traffic being backed up. So we basically. We basically had a discussion and, um, we were able to come to, uh, uh, a conclusion to allow them, to allow us to be able to issue the business license. So that's where we're at as of right now.
Do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. First speaker card is Sigrid Williams.
Hello again.
Hello again. I think Pandora's box has been opened and to use words from Robin, make you, make the municipal code more friendly. And you mentioning trucks, I want to bring your attention to exhibit B that was attached to this discussion item. And it specifically states under chapter eighteen point three two, general provisions, home occupational business licenses, subpart seven. No motor vehicle in excess of eleven thousand pounds gross weight shall be used in the conduct of a home occupation. This might have been great twenty-five years ago when these municipal codes were written. But at least three of you sitting up there tonight have vehicles that have a GW, GVWR greater than eleven thousand pounds. If you are driving a Ford pickup truck, a Chevy pickup truck, or a Dodge, two fifty, twenty-five hundred, or thirty-five hundred. So again, you mentioned these, if you want to make these codes more friendly, let's start looking at some of our muni codes. And while this may not directly affect, well, it would directly affect cottage food operations or CFOs because they're going to be bringing in their materials. And we know here in Norco, many of us drive pickup trucks. You also have, uh, some codes that are mentioned, you reference under that same section, ten sixteen dash zero five zero ten. And that refers to the definition of a commercial vehicle. Well, all of us that register our pickup trucks every year notice that it does say commercial vehicle on there. So that might need to be changed. Within the muni code, it also mentions the California Vehicle Code, section three ninety, that was actually removed in two thousand. And it was renumbered as California Vehicle Code, section three fifty. And it mentions gross vehicle weights in there as well. And then last but not least that I wanted to mention, you mentioned in here, under the definition of a commercial vehicle as pickup trucks. And then under section ten sixteen zero five zero, resident exemption permit. Are you really wanting Norco residents to all have to register and get that exemption when we're driving our pickup trucks and parking them on our properties? So I'd like you to think about redoing the municipal codes when it comes to this. Maybe mention them as commercial trucks with three or more axles. Or bring in the curb weight because all of our vehicles curb weights are under that eleven thousand pounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Sigrid.
Our next speaker card is Nikki Pacheco.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. Um, good evening, mayor and council members. I just want to start off by thanking you all for being open to a discussion about the CFOs and the MHKOs. They can sound really scary, like the MHKOs at first, but I think working together like Kevin Bash says, um, this is the way of the future and we need to figure out how we can make the city more friendly. Um, in March, answering your question, in March of this year, um, my bakery, the Pasolito Sour Dough Bakery was shut down due to the neighbor complaining about the traffic it was causing in our neighborhood. And, and that's when it came to my attention that city employees, they have to make their best judgments in regards to enforcing a vague line in the municipal code. And we've already just discussed it, but to reiterate it, um, a home occupation shall not cause greater pedestrian or vehi, vehicular traffic to the dwelling, um, than which is normal for that zone. So the city employees, they have to decide what's normal. What, I mean, that's, that's a pretty heavy load to bear right there. So the, my bakery at that time was getting between twenty and thirty pickups from my house. And it was spread over a five hour window on a Thursday and a ten hour window on a Friday. Um, many neighbors and customers can vouch for me that these pickups did not cause any greater traffic than what is normal for the residential zone. Uh, unfortunately, I had no opportunity to prove this. I was shut down, I even submitted a case study, it wasn't, if it was looked at, it wasn't, um, acknowledged. So that was, as a citizen, doesn't feel like the city supports, you know, my CFO. So, um, the problem I see here is there's no true guidelines, um, that the city can follow as to what's okay for home pickups, for CFOs. Um, yes, we can sell at farmer's markets and we can sell at all these different places and I am doing that as well. Um, the county states, which has already been said, but it's okay to have thirty people come to your house and eat in one day and no more than sixty in the entire week. Um, doing some research and knowing that it was coming up on, on the, um, agenda today. Um, the Norco Municipal Code eighteen twelve oh six, under permitted uses, item number nine, states that a farm stand can be set up in front of someone's house so people could pick up vegetables and drop money in the box. So what's the difference of having the, those same people come to my house, get their bread, drop money in a box? Um, or, or a cookie stand, I know there's some cookie vendors around, so it's, how are we regulating? How many people can pick up vegetables? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no further speaker cards, mayor.
Okay, we'll bring this back for discussion. Catherine?
No, I had similar questions that council member Grunmeyer already brought up. Um, you know, when you live in a community, there's some give and take there. And, you know, I have had neighbors who had people over all the time or, you know, visitors all the time or deliveries all the time, or, you know, there's a certain amount of traffic that comes with living in a neighborhood. Um, and if we want to support our small businesses and our, our, um, you know, our bakers and, and those that are trying to, you know, think outside of the box and get started, right? Because you got to start somewhere and so being able to have that opportunity to start out of your house rather than all the upfront costs that it would take to go and start in a commercial building, I think we want to support that in our community. So, um, to, to me, this language depends on who's interpreting it. I would prefer always that it's as clear as possible and as objective as possible, so it doesn't matter who's looking at it. My definition of normal then is the same as someone else's definition of, of normal. So, um, you know, given the feedback that we've had from residences, certainly we don't want lines of traffic and we don't want to impact neighbors in a terrible way. Um, and so what's that balance and that limit that we can account for? I would, um, you know, be supportive of however the council wants to take a look at this, whether it's a subcommittee or what have you and then go back through planning, but, um, you know, update this in a way that is practical and meets the needs of, of all of our residents, including the neighbors who are affected, you know? Um, but taking that into account and finding a balance so that, you know, we, when we say we're supportive of our small business owners, then, you know, we need to be supportive of our small business owners and find ways to make that work.
Thank you, Catherine. Kevin? Anything further?
I agree with Robin, I agree with Catherine. I think there's a, there's a bigger picture that has to be looked at here. You know, right now, as those of us that are in the, the county and state committees, um, there's a move by a lot of people to get people off the roads. They're talking about, um, not expanding highways and things specifically so people don't get in their cars, trying to force them into public transportation. With the pandemic that's come, we've got issues whereby people don't, they're used to not working. Add that to, to the fact that we've become the warehouse center of the United States here Riverside, just about. We practically feed the entire San Pedro Harbor. Uh, you drive to Los Angeles on any given morning and you've got two lanes of traffic. So what's happening is people are trying to find ways to supplement their incomes by living at home. Um, we already allow Amazon to supplement their incomes, Costco, Costco uses some pretty large trucks to make deliveries. Um, we have Amazon trucks and cars going through our neighborhoods all the time, going on and off our properties constantly. So I just think that we need to understand that these businesses are going to go in, whether, whether we want them or we, we don't. Um, and I think that this is our opportunity to regulate those businesses. One of the things that we're looking to do, um, is to create boutique farming in the city of Norco. And that's going to require people who, as one of the speakers talked about, you're going to have booths in the front of these farms. I mean, if it goes as I would like it to, um, you will have a lot of these farms as a major component, not just for people to generate income, but as a means to protect the large lots in the city of Norco. And that means you're going to have some, probably some, my hope is someday you'll have some fairly large trucks that'll be picking up product from those places. Um, so I think that what we need to do is maybe it does need to go back someplace or a subcommittee to make sure we totally understand the businesses. But I think that we need to embrace this, this change in our, our community. These are, these are huge, they're happening everywhere and, um, like Catherine said, I feel bad about the people that, you know, live in these single family neighborhoods. But I, I'd a lot rather see somebody with a small home business, um, not lose their house or be able to stay home with their kids or not have to get on a freeway with big rigs nose to butt. Um, if we can facilitate that, I think it's good for this society as a whole. Anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted?
You know, we, I own a small business, I do it out of my house. I don't make bakeries, I wish I did. Uh, I don't have a problem with the cottage farm and I understand people do that. But you think how many businesses we have, we, up the street from me, there's a gentleman that runs a courier service. I can tell you right now, there's half a dozen vans there in front of his house. And the employees come, go, and they go away. Does it bother me? Nah, it's not. When he starts putting more than that in there, you can't park, then that's a problem. But I think this is, it's brought out, it just, and bear with me if I said it was weird. It's just hard to think of somebody having a little restaurant in their house. And they're serving a full dinner in there and then it throws, I was thinking, well, what do we do when they want to serve wine with that dinner? Or they want to serve an alcohol beverage? So now we get a whole new bunch of people that want to come in and control them. So, I mean, the, the micro, uh, kitchens in that restaurant deal, I, I think that's going to be, John, you may say Sacramento did it, but I think they opened up a can of worms. And that's going to come and it's going to be bigger than us. But I don't have a problem with the cottage farm and these things. Let it go, one complaint, somebody didn't like it, oh well. But I'm for just, we just have to monitor it, just to see, so it doesn't get out of hand, that's it. Thanks.
Robin?
So I'm going to go a little bit off of what Kevin said, just to maybe bring the micro enterprise home kitchen to maybe a Norco perspective. We've got these little boutique farms, you grow all of the stuff at your farm. And you can put out an ad and you can have a little dinner, dinner party for five or six people with Farm to Fork. They will come and pay you money, they will sit in your beautifully landscaped yards, I could name off ten ranches. I would go sit and have a dinner like that and pay money to do it. And that exactly fits with our lifestyle, one hundred percent. And it's going to bring people to this community to see that we have agriculture, we have a rural lifestyle. People are growing their own vegetables, they're raising their own animals. And then this is what you get. And it would totally be a dinner date for an LA couple in a heartbeat that they would pay hundreds of dollars for. Now, the regulation part of it, I don't know if you've ever been through a county health inspection, but oh my gosh, they're intense. So that piece of the pie for me, I have zero heartburn over because I've been through a county health inspection with a food truck and it's not fun. So that piece of it, I am not worried about at all because health department will shut you down in a minute. Where I see we need to do work and, uh, Sigrid, thank you, it's kind of embarrassing that our code is that outdated and, and thank you for bringing it up. I think we just need to go back to that part of the code, clean it up and make it where it falls within, you know, what the states told us. But again, trying to keep our Norco uniqueness as much as we possibly can. And I think for, at the end of the day, that that's going to go back to, you know, defining, like Catherine said, what is normal vehicle traffic for a residential area. So I'm in favor of this, I would be happy with the subcommittee idea to work with staff to bring it back. Um, because I think this could potentially be another piece of the pie with the CFOs and potentially mi, micro kitchens to again enhance the lifestyle that we are trying to protect in our community.
And given that, and the fact that this applies much more broadly, I mean, the, the cases that we prosecuted generally have been contractors, uh, you know, a plumber, somebody that's doing work on cars in their backyard and, you know, that's, that's the real problem. So maybe what you want to do is look at, uh, home occupation permit only for CFOs and of course, we can't, yeah, we can't, the, 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 the micro stuff, we don't have any control over in any circumstance and we can't establish regulations. But CFOs, there's no reason why you can't adopt an ordinance which just addresses that particular issue.
So what about directing, uh, staff planning commission to clean up the, the home occupation? Okay, eighteen thirty-two? And, um, also the suggestion to start looking at CFOs. Okay, and. Let's have it go to planning first. Planning staff, then planning commission. I think that would be.
That would be the process because it is, it would be a zoning code amendment and that would go to the planning commission. And yeah, they, they would be able to give us some, um, direction as well, so I think that would be a good start.
And the only other thing we're mentioning about like a subcommittee, with their, with the new EDAC group, would that be a, some type of relationship there that could also consider down the road, but when we clean up the rules first. And if there's anything else, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Please vote. Motion passed as unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments also. Okay. Revision to, uh, this will now be called item five E. And John, are you going to do this?
Yeah, yeah.
John?
Or at least start it?
Yes, and you, and Catherine.
I'm going to recuse myself because of a conflict of interest based on the location of my residence.
Okay, we'll, we'll try and make this short and, and although not particularly sweet. As the council is aware, you received a letter from the Larson Law Firm on behalf. Okay, as the, I don't know if it's any louder. As the council is aware, you received a letter from the, uh, Lawson Law Firm on behalf of Frontier Homes uh, suggesting without any factual support that the city council had somehow acted to delay or obstruct the processing of the Frontier project. Frontier project. Not only, of course, is that not the case, it's been pointed out to them when they've raised it in the past, both verbally and in writing, that that isn't the case, that the city is processing the Frontier project in the same manner that it processes any other project. Frontier, I think, sometimes confuses approval with processing. That if they submit plans and they're sent back to them for revisions, they're upset that somehow that's a delay. That's how you, a city processes projects. Given the suggestion, and that's what it was, a suggestion, and not, not any factual basis, in the letter which references the Brown Act, there are a couple of options, I suppose, in addressing with the issues which were raised. One is either not to respond or to argue about, say, no, that's not true, thank you and goodbye. What that does, however, is at least provide the potential, maybe even a likelihood, of litigation that is perhaps frivolous, but nonetheless still costs time and money to the city. The, the other is the remedies in the Brown Act, that is to, one, quote, rescind any of those alleged suggested actions, which didn't, of course, take place. So it, so it's a matter of saying, we didn't do it, but to the extent that you think that anything could be construed as doing it, we've rescinded them. That eliminates the potential for litigation over those issues and over the closed sessions. And the, the second is to commit to, to not doing it in the future. And the statute sets forth the, the form of doing that. I'm suggesting that, well, I'd like to argue with them some, that you take this approach simply because it takes the issue off the table. And we really don't need to be, I don't think, in a position of even allowing a, a small glimmer of ability to, to file what could be a legitimate lawsuit. So doing this, no downside to the city. It's simply saying that we, we didn't do it, but to the extent you think we did, we rescinded those actions and we're never gonna do it on a go-forward basis because we're processing the project. I mean, they've received a letter subsequent to this letter, which talks about the issuance of grading permits. There's no question that we're treating this project under the law the same as we would any other project. But there's also little to be served in getting in an argument for which the, the, is more expensive and the conclusion doesn't resolve anything. And so that's my suggestion, that the, the council approve the action recommended in the staff report.
Any questions? Or we can start with Kevin? You want to, Ted? Go ahead. Not Ted.
Ted, go ahead, Kevin.
He's groaning.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay.
John?
Yep.
I'm reading your letter, and this is the one dated July 7, 2022. Bear in mind, I'm not an attorney, okay? Okay, nor did I go to some Holiday Inn where I got to be a customer. To avoid unnecessary litigation without admitting any violation of the Ralph M. Brown Act, the City Council of the City of Norco hereby unconditionally commits that it will cease and desist from, and I, I understand that, and this is the part that gets here, and not repeat the challenge passed action as described above.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not my language. That's what the statute says you have to say. That's simply filling in the blanks.
So as described above, they're talking about-
That describes about refers to the suggestion that we've delayed or obstructed processing of the project.
So that's some legal verbiage, is what you're telling me.
Yeah.
No wonder nobody understands this stuff.
I wouldn't have said it that way, but the code sets forth this specific-
Okay, that's it. I just, it did-
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you.
Doesn't make any sense when you read it, like, just reading it.
Well, that's partly because both, that portion of the Brown Act and the, the portion which talks about rescission really doesn't address this kind of situation. This is when the, the City Council of Anaheim approves a contract with the Angels in closed session, and then they're challenged on it, and the remedy is to rescind it. That's what, I mean, real actions that are demonstrable is the purpose of these sections of the Brown Act. But, and we can argue about that and say, oh, it doesn't apply, and, but we're just back in the same boat, and there's no point in giving them anything to argue about.
And I understand, I just, the verbiage there, just, just strange. Okay.
Yep.
Robin? Okay. I'm gonna take some advice and try to keep emotions out of it. It just, it just strikes me wrong to say that you're accusing me of something that I haven't done, but here's a letter to say that I won't do it ever again. And I'm having a hard time with that.
I don't disagree with you.
So, if I could cut, Erica, since you've sat there all night, do you have any comments? Okay, all right. Do we have any public comments?
I have no public comment cards on this one.
Bring it back for discussion, action? Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry.
Were you gonna say anything?
No, I was asking Angie a question.
Okay.
So I move to approve the attached rescission response and commitment as listed on the agenda.
Reluctantly, I'll second that. Not because of what it is, just, I'm kinda like you, Greg. I feel that way.
Please vote.
Yeah, I know.
And motion passes showing Catherine Alman of State.
Okay. All right, getting down to it. Go into our public hearings. Dana?
Order of presentation for public hearing items, staff report of presentation, council questions of staff, open public hearing with public comment, close public hearing, council discussion, and action.
Thank you. This is the first reading ordinance number 1083. Alma?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is Agenda Item 6A, and it is the first reading for ordinance 1083, which is a city-initiated proposal to amend Norco Municipal Code Title 18 zoning to add Chapter 18.70, which is an inclusionary housing program, which is a zone code amendment 2022-03. In a nutshell, this inclusionary housing ordinance is, it's not mandatory interstate law, but what it does do, it can provide the cities with an effective tool to facilitate and encouragement the construction of affordable housing units in the community and help satisfy the state mandated, mandated affordable unit production, or what is known as the RAINA numbers. And Erica Vega from our legal team is here, and will go into the details of the program proposed with this ordinance. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Erica.
Good evening. Double duty.
Yes, good evening. Good to see you all again. This is, um, I'll try to keep it brief. The ordinance itself is, is relatively straightforward as inclusionary housing ordinances go. Consistent with state law, both case law and state statute, the proposed inclusionary housing ordinance would require all new residential development, both single-family and multifamily, that consist of five units or more, to set aside 15% of the units for affordable housing to low and moderate income. The breakdown of that would be 9% for lower income, 6% for moderate income. And there are some provisions in there that would allow some adjustments to those percentages if they were to, say, provide more than 9% for low income. They could offset that, their, their moderate requirements. Or if they were to provide units for very low income, they could also get a reduction of some of their units. But the basic principle is 15%. And why 15%? Because state law says that if you go above 15%, then HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, now has authority to come in and require the city to have a feasibility study conducted to show that your requirements aren't unduly constraining the production of housing in your community. So we wanna keep it at 15% or lower to avoid getting the Department of Housing and Community Development involved. The ordinance provides for alternative means of compliance as well. The alternative means that are proposed include an in-lu fee option, which would require the council to set that fee by separate resolution. That's not part of what's before you this evening. Or providing units off-site or land donation. And those alternative means of compliance can be sort of mixed and matched and pieced together with production of units onsite as well to meet their overall housing, inclusionary housing requirements under the ordinance. There are some basic procedural provisions included, including what is essentially an appeal procedure. If the developer believes that, as applied to their particular project, it constitutes a taking of their property rights, and that, that is something that, you know, generally speaking, would not be true. Case laws held that, that on their face, the inclusionary housing ordinances are not takings of property. But there is always the remote possibility that, that there could be a unique circumstance. So you wanna make sure that you have appropriate procedures in place to protect the city in the event that there is something unique that comes up. The ordinance is relatively streamlined and allows the City Council to adopt a separate set of regulations that would be more detailed in terms of the implementation, and which would most likely include forms of the inclusionary housing agreement and the inclusionary housing plan that are required as a part of the ordinance as well. So with that, I don't have, I don't have a formal PowerPoint. I know it's getting late, but I'm obviously here to answer any questions you may have about the ordinance or about inclusionary housing requirements in general.
I have a couple of questions. With, with off-site units and la, land donation. So that, well, let's just go, let's just say the land donation. When I read this on page 371, "by a conveyance of land to the city for the construction of the required inclusionary units," is that meaning the city has to build those units?
The city wouldn't have to, but the city would have the land available to. So the city could. The city could also partner with some kind of nonprofit affordable housing developer, so this ordinance wouldn't necessarily tie your hands and, and say that the city is committed to operating publicly-owned housing.
Okay. But both, I guess, both the off-site and the, and the land, it strikes me as a, it's an out for a developer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then that takes me back into the in-lu fees, which I just, in most cases, don't believe in, believe in them. That, once again, it's an out for a developer.
Understood. So unfortunately, state law provides that you do have to include an alternative means of compliance other than providing all of the units onsite in the project. So it doesn't say which alternative means you have to include, so there's some flexibility there. But the in-lu fee is by far the most common alternative means of compliance that is used by other cities in California. And you just need to, if you're concerned about that being a, a quote, out, you just wanna make sure that when you're setting your fee, you're, you're keeping that in mind, and setting the fee at an amount that is a disincentive, I guess, for deciding to pay the fee instead of providing the units onsite.
But even the planning commission looked at it as an op-out. Yeah, and I just, I think whatever that in-lu fee is, then the, you know, down the road, the costs have accelerated. And then you're, you're caught on the short end again.
Yeah, and there, there are multiple different methodologies that can be used for setting the in-lu fee. And I've, I've provided staff with some sample fee studies from other agencies and the names of consultants that do that kind of work. So there's no one way to calculate it. And depending on the method that you choose, you know, it can be significantly more than a different method. For example, you know, you can do a fee based off of the actual cost of constructing a unit versus the price differential between an affordable unit and the, and the non, the market rate unit. So there's flexibility there, but I would recommend, no matter what, that you include some kind of in, cost inflator, whether it's based off the construction cost index or something else, to make sure that your, your fees are keeping pace with actual costs to produce the units.
And then in 18, or on page 370, 18.7010, with in-lu fee, then there's also the alternate to pay half the fee? And then pay the second half before occupancy?
That's not a legal requirement. So if there's an issue with that in terms of timing of the payment, that can be adjusted.
One last question for now, and back on land donation. So I'm the developer, and I'm going to give you some land, right? That's the way this reads? What are the checks and balances? Because I'm gonna give you the worst piece, like they do in parks, okay? You have a development, your worst parcel is I'm gonna donate it as a park that I can't build on.
Right.
What, what keeps this part from, from that from happening?
For the land donation and for the off-site units, if you notice, it says, upon application by the developer and at the discretion of the director. The in-lu fee doesn't have that discretion of the director built in, because it's, it's a fee amount, it's set, they pay it, they choose to pay it in lieu. But for land donation and off-site, there has to be some agreement by the city that it's willing to take that land or that the off-site units that are being proposed are actually acceptable.
And the director would have to do his or her own investigation on the value and-
Correct. Suitability of the, the land, suitability of the units if it's, they're gonna be doing that off-site.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin? Questions?
No, I, I don't have anything. Thank you, Erica.
Okay, Catherine?
You stole my questions, so, thank you.
I saw your list.
So I have-
We went through all your stuff.
Uh, one question, I have a couple of questions. The first one is on the in-lu fees and going into the trust. That money has to be used to provide housing or shell, or shelter for low, very low-income people, yes?
Yes, so that's the, that's the purpose of that trust fund.
Can it be met through programs?
Through programs?
Such as our homeless solutions partnerships and buying more motel nights or things like that?
Uh, that's an interesting question. I've, I've never seen it done that way, because typically this is for permanent housing solutions or long, long-term housing solutions, but that's something we could look into, if that's- But that's something we could look into if that's, um, of interest to the city council as a potential option.
I just think as a way to provide potential ongoing funding source for that program. I think it's something we could look at. And I know the housing fund, like right now, the regular housing fund, there's only a certain percentage that we can use for that. And I'm just trying to think of, you know, you're sheltering people in those income levels through that program. So if there would be a way to use some of that money for that purpose, if it would be legal. And then my last question goes to pretty much what Planning Commission, um, had said or what was in our staff report, um, with their concerns on how the in-lu fees would be, um, used and a detailed use of those fees and then the definition of the trust fund. So with those things, it just said, should we concur that, um, staff will work with legal counsel to modify? Does that mean that it would be adding additional sections to the municipal code or that it would come, and those would come back as separate pieces? Or would this be, uh, more detailed and then come back again?
You, you could do it either way.
Oh, either way is fine. Okay, good.
If you would like to see that built into the ordinance before you do first reading, this hearing could just be continued, uh, open and we could make modifications and, and bring it back. Um, or if you want to proceed now to get something on the books, you could do that. And then we can assess whether the changes can be included in the regulations that are already contemplated or if we need ordinance amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Ted?
No, I have the same concerns on the in-lu fees. We have not got a good track record here on the use of in-lu fees. So I, and I'm trying to understand what you just said on the, so we can fix this now to deal with the fee situation, the in-lu fees before, because this is the first reading. So.
I could say something on that. By definition, a trust fund is a fund that is restricted for a specific purpose. So I don't think that is, there needs to be a change to reflect. And if, for example, it gets deposited in the housing fund as an example, the purpose of that, that fund, uh, is to, um, is to do programs that are, and all housing that are, uh, meets affordable criteria.
I think that the in, if you're asking about the in-lu fees, that as Erica's indicated, the, that option is essentially required. So it's a, at some point, it's going to be a function of the council to decide how you want to calculate that fee and what it will be, uh, taking into account Greg's concern about being an out for the developer.
So it's in there?
But it could be taken out, correct?
Like housing, housing quimby.
Right, but the, the option for an in-lu fee could be removed.
It, it could be.
As long as there are, is an alternative or alternatives.
You might need to make some adjustments there to the other alternatives that are remaining if you take the in-lu fee out, because we can't have a situation where the director decides neither alternative is something the city wants to entertain and then you've left them with no alternative. So.
Has any city, um, not allowed for in-lu fees or have you seen any inclusionary?
I can't think of any off the top of my head. In-lu fees are very common.
Okay.
And I'd, and I'd say the same thing.
But no argument with me, they are common. It's just that, rather see the work accomplished before I op-out, unless it's a situation where it, it can't be done, then in-lu fees are appropriate. Just because I want to, uh, re, you know, reduce my affordable units, I'll pay you cash. And I guess that's going to be one of my next questions is along that line. I'm a developer and I want to build high-end market rate apartments, okay? But you're going to tell me, I, well, I need to have fifteen percent or something to be affordable. Well, the in-lu fee is my op-out.
Yeah, I understand.
And I'll make it on the other end. But I haven't benefited, I, see, I don't see the benefit then of where we, where we have helped people with affordable housing. Affordable units.
And ultimately it comes down to what the city, uh, does with the in-lu fees. I mean, if you put them in the bank, then nothing happens. If, uh, you use them to assist in the building of housing or build housing, then something does happen.
And, and it doesn't have to just be build housing. It could also be, you know, rehabilitating existing vacant housing that maybe, um, could be brought back to the market for whatever reason. Um, you could perhaps pour, like say, just thinking hypothetically, like a foreclosure of some sort that needs.
Kind of how we used redevelopment money?
Exactly, exactly. Forty, fifty thousand dollars poured into it to be, you know, and then can be, uh, sold or rented to a low-income household. And that could be a good way to leverage some of the money. I've also, I don't want to get too far afield here, but, um, the, there are some people who actually think in-lu fees are preferable because then if you partner with, um, a, a nonprofit affordable housing developer, they can leverage that money for more money and tax credits and things like that. And so it, it's, uh, being able to get the units while only putting in a small, a small piece of the pie, I guess.
That's kind of moving into the section eight then, isn't it, with, with the tax credits and all of that?
Uh, tax credit financing is, it's, it's different than section eight and it's outside of my scope of practice. There's only so much one person can do. Yeah, I don't do, um, real estate financing transactions, so.
Okay. Any other questions for now? Thank you, Erica. Don't, okay.
So I went to the definitions that are in the code, um, and it says that it'll be a separate fund, um, known as the Inclusionary Housing Trust Fund. Um, but then it talks about that, um, like the uses or whatever would be by resolution. So of the city council, um, what is the timeline through this process to bring those types of items back? Because basically we've got a skeleton, if I'm thinking correctly, and we've got to put a little bit of meat to the ordinance through those resolutions, so.
Yeah, um, I would, I would have to work with staff to see what's realistic. Uh, I think what would be the first set of resolutions, which would be, um, you're regu- implementing regulations and a resolution adopting an in-lu fee, assuming that you keep that in the ordinance. Um, I think what, the provision you're just referring to, a resolution on the expenditure of in-lu fees, you have time on that because you haven't collected any yet. So we'd have to even see what, what you collect. Um, you, you may not collect any because they may choose to build them on-site, in which case that's a non-issue for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Going to open the public hearing. Dana, do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment cards.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. Bring it back to, uh, council for discussion and action. Kevin?
Thank you, Bill.
I'm good.
Okay. Ted? Robin?
Catherine?
Go ahead and, um, entertain a motion? Or I'll make the motion?
I'll make a motion. To adopt ordinance ten eighty-three, first reading to amend the Norco Municipal Code Title eighteen zoning, adding chapter eighteen dot seven zero, inclusionary housing program and schedule the second reading on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, Zone Code Amendment two thousand twenty-two dash oh three.
That's, that's good, except I get to do that.
Sorry, then I'll make them, John reads it.
John's turn.
You need a second for.
Getting late.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Norco, California, amending Norco Municipal Code, NMC Title eighteen, to add chapter eighteen point seven oh, inclusionary housing program, Zone Code Amendment twenty, twenty-two dash oh three. Sound familiar?
There you go. Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Okay. City Council Staff Communications. Does city staff have anything to report? City Attorney? Andy? Kevin? Any questions, Kevin?
Uh, I have a request.
Pardon?
We, I'm not sure, did, did you ask me, did you ask my, say my name?
I've called your name.
Oh, I hear a blum 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 like that. All right, well, anyway, um, I would like to look at doing a study or a moratorium on, uh, warehouse buildings of any kind. Uh, we have a project coming in, Alir, which, which, uh, I don't know what the status is. I know they've made their application. My understanding is it has a lot of doors. As you know, Greg, we spent a lot of time, um, a lot of people don't quite understand that the Palomino project is not a, is not a truck depot. That we were very careful with the exits, the entrances, the, uh, the number of bays. Uh, the same applies to the, um, the easy-up buildings and the structures around them. The same applies to the Better Nutritionals, the buildings next to that. But we have, uh, Alir, we have another project that, that, uh, they're looking at us over at Wiley. And I think that it might behoove us to sit down and look at architecture, look at, uh, number of bays, look at, um, uh, air quality, different things like that. Um, because I, I really just don't see any place in Norco where we would be able to put in a truck depot situation. And so, but I think we need to look at it. And so I think that at this moment, we need to take a pause, uh, to kind of, and this is something that's happening region-wide, but take a pause and kind of look at how we want to plan, uh, the warehousing that we're going to, that we do have available, uh, in the coming, coming years. So if I could bring that a discussion before council or, uh, if you like, put it before planning.
We okay with that as a discussion item?
So I guess that's a motion.
I'll, I'll second your motion as, uh, to bring it forward either as a discussion item and I'd like to say maybe start that with the Planning Commission? Or would you want it to start with council?
Um, I don't know. I'm, I'm good either way.
And, and if, and if it actually probably council is first in the sense that if, if it's a moratorium.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. The council has to enact that and then that's when it goes to Planning Commission.
I saw in my motion, it would be to bring it to council and look at creating a, a moratorium or a study of some kind of warehousing projects.
I'll second that.
I'll have to call the vote on this one since it wasn't on the agenda. Did it come up for you? Okay, great. Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Is that it, Kevin?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Catherine?
No, just want to thank Councilmember Ash for bringing that up. I've, I've heard a lot of feedback on that from residents and I think it's worthy of our discussion and time and looking at that. So thank you.
Robin?
Just wanted to thank staff for a really fabulous picnic on Monday. It was amazing. Thank you.
Ted? I have two items. One is to thank Chad and Public Works for their, uh, due diligence a couple of weeks ago on the water leaks on Norco Drive, Shadow Canyon, Fifth Street, that all hit at the same time. And of course, it always happens on a Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night. And so appreciate all your follow-through with that. And then Michelle, Fourth of July, all I can say is best picnic ever, okay? And who chose the band?
The band was really good.
They were great.
A lot of people liked them, yeah.
Yeah. It was real good. So. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.